Harrisburg Planning Commission meeting order at approximately 6:34. Commissioners, the minutes where the August meeting is not available, we'll move on them in the October meeting. Under old business, there is none. Under new business, this is a special exception application for 2743 North Front Street. The zone Riverfront filed by Justin Hershey with first choice home buyers. This is to establish a supportive housing facility on site. Jeff, are they here?
Yes.
Could you come up?
Okay. So, the applicant is proposing to establish a supportive housing facility use on site. The proposal requires zoning hearing board approval of a special exception for the proposed use per section seven dash three oh five point seven of the zoning code. The property at 2743 North Front Street is a point three two acre lot featuring a three story, four thousand four hundred and forty-four square foot structure which was constructed circa nineteen hundred. The property is bounded by the property at 2745 North Front Street to the north, River Street to the east, the property at 2721 North Front Street to the south, and North Front Street to the west. Its detached structure features elements of the neoclassical and colonial revival architectural styles. Character defining features include the brick facade, the substantial entrance portico, the symmetrical appearance of the main building, the substantial wooden corners above the second floor featuring dentals, the metal fire escape on the rear elevation, the detached garage reflecting elements of the principal building, and the real slate manser roof flanked by two substantial brick chimneys. The main entrance features a paneled wooden door set in a simple frame flanked by paneled side lights infilled with wood, which are all topped with simple wooden transoms and dentals. It is accessed by a small concrete stoop sheltered by a substantial portico featuring door columns, large pilasters, and an arched gable roof pediment with dentals. There are three other entrances on the rear elevation featuring a variety of materials and designs, although all appear to have half view panes. Infiltration throughout the property is varied, although all windows appear to be wood and feature divided light panes. Four of the six dormers feature arched windows with cardinal arch designs. The structure is topped with steep gabled roofs which are clad in real slate shingles. Newer additions on the side and rear feature flat rubber roofs. The detached garage is topped with a hipped roof also featuring real slate shingles. Front yard features mature landscaping with a brick walkway through a well-maintained lawn. Property retains much of its original appearance and the building retains most, if not all, of its architectural and historic integrity. Structure reflects the architecture of older residential structures along Front Street and throughout the neighborhood, and thus contributes significantly to the architectural and historic character of the community. Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following conditions: The applicant will provide the Planning Bureau with all federal, state, and county licenses of the facility operator to ensure that the proposed use is in conformance with the applicable specific criteria. Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following reasons: The proposed use will be similar to that of the previous business on site, which operated for twenty-three years and will accommodate the same population groups; as such, impact should be similar in nature; and the proposed use seeks to address a vulnerable population and provide them with services which enable personal growth and self-sufficiency, allowing them to thrive after their time at the facility.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you state your name, address, and relationship to the project?
Yes, sir. My name is David Kiedis with First Choice Home Buyers. My personal home address is thirty-five Lady Harrington Drive in York, Pennsylvania, and I am the owner.
Did you... Oh, first, are you acceptable in the condition?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did you want to add anything to the report?
I mean, just as far as context for our company, one of the things that we love to do is take old things and make them new. For this particular building itself, we don't actually want to touch any architecture because we do think it's a beautiful building in and of itself. I think like Jeffrey said, it definitely is something that we would love to keep, and it's just important to keep it as far as from a Harrisburg city standpoint. Another thing is our commission statement is to positively impact others through real estate investing. So, we know one of the ways we can do that is with this particular building, because we know we can give housing for homeless use into us, so that's really, really important. So, then partnering with a program like Thrive Housing Services would be really, really important for us, because no one there already doing it. So, they're going to do it at a really high, high capacity. That makes it exciting for us, too.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, I have no questions at this time. If you have any concerns or questions, I'll start with Commissioner McKenzie.
None at this time.
Commissioner O'Toole.
Yes, did you contact any of the neighbors?
Yes, sir. Yep. And I do have as far as the letter itself and then proof that they were all sent. Yeah, full letter.
Okay. When were they sent?
It was sent yesterday, but I did it overnight, but they were supposed to get it before six o'clock today.
Ah, yeah. Ah, yeah. Yeah, something like this, when you're trying to put a home like this into, or a facility like this into a neighborhood, we'd really like to get more of a buy-in from the neighborhood.
Understood.
In fact, more so than a letter, I'd encourage you to actually hold a meeting, answer questions that anyone may have. But, you know, sending a letter that they, that arrived today, I mean, some of them probably go home from work five thirty, six o'clock, and that's why they're probably not here to address this. So, I'd strongly suggest that you, you know, you ask us to continue this and do this the right way, but that's just my position.
Understood. As a follow-up, would you suggest, would it be something that'd be good to maybe go knock on doors, or would you kind of say nothing?
Yeah, you could do one of two things. Knock on doors and get them to sign a statement that they've spoken to you and that they're approval of it. But even better, you got the facility there, invite them all there, you know, some evening for Q and A, and describe to them what you're planning on doing. I think it's important to let them know that it's consistent with what the last owner did, because, I mean, that's, a lot of people don't know what went on there beforehand, so...
Understood.
Yeah, that's just my position.
Understood.
Commissioner Reed? She's not here. Commissioner Murray?
Thank you. I was going to ask similar questions as Commissioner O'Toole did, and I would just state that I wholeheartedly second his comments and would encourage you, actually urge you to do the same about talking to the neighbors about this, and we'd probably like to see what their feedback is on this.
Understood.
Commissioner Jordan?
The only question I had right now is how many rooms or how many people did you intend to have to a particular room or unit?
Yeah, great, great question. So, we're going to have eight total. Use there would be a lot in the building, assuming based on square footage with the program itself.
Okay, so one person per room?
You're allowed to have up to two, depending on the square footage, but it will be one to two.
Correct.
And then there'll be twenty-four seven supervision of the program.
Thank you.
Joe?
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
We'll go to the public right now. Is anyone in the public for or against this project? If you are, please stand and state your name and address. I'll start to my left. Just state your name and address.
By the way, the houses were built in nineteen twenty-five, and next year we did a hundredth anniversary. We couldn't prove it, all these houses have the, aren't the porticoes across, and they're all built by the famous Italian architect, I can't remember. Anyway, I'd like to know more about what that's going to do, supportive, so the, that could be anything. And maybe I just didn't hear exactly what it was going to do.
Yeah, would it be okay if I brought in the director of this supportive housing so she can best explain it more so than I could? A little more eloquent?
Yeah, you can bring her in.
Do you mind just sharing a little bit? Understood.
I need her, need you to state your name, address, and relationship to the project.
Lee Allen, twenty-six oh one Walnut Street, Harrisburg. And we are the program that will be the property.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'd like you to explain what the project is.
So, the project is, it's a housing program, so they can house either males or females.
I need to go closer, so I can...
Okay, no problem. It's a housing, it's a housing program that houses males or females, and they can be between the ages of ten and twenty-one years old. So, what we do is we house referrals that are given to us from Dauphin County, and we provide services. We have a twenty-four hour staff that's at the facility, and we help them to basically go to school, get their mental health, and their medical thing situated. These are kids that are taken from parent's custody and put into a program so that a staff can help assist them maintain their status in the community, attend their same schools, keep their same friends, and be able to work to become productive citizens within the community. Currently, right now, there's no supportive housing program that Dauphin County can refer their kids to within the county, so all the...
Something like this already in the city.
Well, this will be a licensed program, so I'm not sure...
They'll all be licensed. I want out on the hill, like, twenty-first street.
I'm not...
Old school building. Let it go back sometime. I don't think it's for you. Anyway, I think we have had something like this in the city.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure of any other programs that are in the city. I know our program is, has been around for ten years, and we've been doing it for a while. We are in, we have other neighbors, we're in Pembroke.
What city are you in?
We're all in Harrisburg. We, we have, we're only in Dauphin County. Well, we service kids from maybe possibly Cumberland or Lancaster or York, and the majority of our kids are Dauphin County kids, but the reason why we are having a licensed facility is because there's no licensed facility in Dauphin, and all of our kids are getting transported to different cities.
Well, I would still think, in my opinion, historical value of those houses along there and the hundredth anniversary coming up next year, and I can't recite all the history, but I can prove it about it in this book, so my suggestion would be to deny this.
I'll just add to it. I do appreciate it, thank you very much. But we're not looking to actually change any of the historical footprint or the exterior of the city as well, of the building as well. So, we for sure want to keep that, because it adds a lot to the actual community. Thank you, though.
Just to let everyone know, Commissioner Jackson is a former planning commission member, so I'm glad you're still active.
I miss you, bud.
We miss you. Is there anyone else on my left? Is there anyone in the center who are against this project? I'm at the middle now. Is there anyone from the center? No one? Is there anyone to my right? Could you, could you use a microphone? It's like a chart.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Rebecca Leepart, six oh nine Shower Street in Harrisburg. Came here similarly for a different project, but this piques my interest because I live in Shypoke, and so I don't know if everyone's familiar with what's been happening down in Shypoke, but I got to tell you, I'm exasperated by it on so many levels. I have an eight-month-old baby. You're going to hear a similar story when we get to the why I'm actually here. I can't take a walk with my baby in a stroller without having someone on heroin nodding out in front of me, or a fistfight in front of me. Breaks my heart. It's actually like I'm going to get emotional just talking about it. I've owned my home there for over a decade. It has never been like this, and I see all types of folks trying to come in and do something without doing a needs assessment, without figuring out what we really need. We're not getting to the root of what's going on, and we're pushing people down to my area, and we are tired, because we're a small little neighborhood that can only do so much and can only bear so much. And we're going to get to some of this later on, but I do want to apologize for trying to be somewhere else in the city, so I'm actually going to speak a little bit in favor of that, because we do need to start being cognizant of sharing this across all of our community, not ostracizing and pushing it to one small community. And, you know, have you completed a needs assessment? Because that's always, you know, I have a sociology background, and I implore everyone that's trying to bring a project like this in front of these commissions to complete one, get a sociologist on board, figure out what we really need. It's important. It's really important. So, have you done that?
No, so, I mean, what we've done is spoke to someone like Dee who's actually in the thick of it.
Yeah.
And has a bunch of applicants, and, you know, with kids that have done nothing to deserve as far as having to be displaced from the parents.
Sure.
You know, so that would be the needs assessment for us, is going, hey, if we can help multiple kids in one instance, that's what we're doing. So, we're not looking to bring in someone that, like you said, it is sad. Right, and that's kind of why, like you said, we're doing something about it, because they're, as I think we all know, right, the issues start at a young age, so if you get kids at a young age, that's very, very important for us. And that's always been one of my whys. I've always wanted to do that, as far as really helping kids.
Sure.
Because that's what's going to be, and they have someone like Dee who has a background in it, and who has twenty-four seven supervision in it. Like, that is what I think a lot of people need, and it is, it's sad, though, if you're feeling that in your own neighborhood, and I can't imagine right now as far as how you're feeling, but that's what we're trying to do.
No, and I, and I appreciate that. I still implore you to do an actual full-fledged needs assessment, because what you think you may need, you may be very surprised about what you need, not to say that your project is a no, but, but you may be, you may find out through that process that there are things that you can tweak and do that would be better suited to the specific community at hand, because a lot of times people make assumptions about what folks need, instead of really bringing in people that are professionals in this line of work and doing the due diligence to figure out what the needs are. For instance, we got two projects going about, one's being built, the VOPA, and we're going to get to it, and another one that's coming in, both for veterans. How many veterans do we have here? We'll get to it, but that's my point, right? So, you know, I implore you to do that. I think it's also a great idea to bring in some community involvement, get the community involved, have people take a look at that, understand your project, and solicit buy-in, so thank you so much.
Yeah, that's definitely the reason. We're not trying as First Choice Home Buyers to do it and manage it ourselves, right? I'm not going to try to be an expert, I'm bringing in an expert, and somebody who does that on the daily. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If not, again, to back up my commissioners, this is why we always ask people to do petition when you come in the neighborhood for any project, you know, to get together, then you wouldn't have this. You could get there and put, and then explain it to them, so you wouldn't have to come here and we have to, you know, go back and forth. So, that's my concern, so commissioners, a motion, or did you want to add anything to the conditions? Not, could I get a motion?
Are we allowed to motion to continue it, Neil?
Table it.
Table it.
It's not a land bone.
All right. With the understanding that they would go, do what they can, get some community buy-in and come back?
It requires two...
All right. Yeah, I'm going to make that motion, and I encourage you to do that, and I think you'll be surprised that, that once you bring the neighbors in and you talk to them, that they will be reasonable. And as I indicated earlier, I think if you explain to them what the building was used for prior, and explain to them that this is not much of a deviation, that that'll, you know, that might be enough to win them over. But, and I'm doing this as a favor to the guy, I don't think you're going to get a motion to approve it tonight, unless I'm misreading the commission up here.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
It's been moved and second to table this project. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. So, I would just, you know, take his suggestions and try to meet with the people.
And then, raise them.
Thank you. The next item number two, this is a land development plan revision, application for one twelve Market Street. The zone downtown center is filed by Brad Jones with the Veterans Building Investors LLC. Is to convert the existing eight-story office building into a mixed-use building with a bank on the first floor and up to thirty-five residential units on the upper floors. This LDP was originally reviewed by the Planning Commission in April twenty twenty-one. It's subsequently approved in May twenty twenty-one. Jeff?
Thank you. The applicant proposes to convert the existing eight-story office building into a residential building with forty-eight apartment units. I think the reference to a bank was transcription error from the previous review of this case in May of twenty twenty-one. The current proposal only considers the construction of apartment units within the building. The property at one twelve Market Street is a point one six acre lot featuring an eight-story, fifty thousand seven hundred and fifty-two square foot building which was constructed in eighteen ninety-nine, although there was a significant expansion of the building in nineteen nineteen. Property is bounded by the property at one nineteen Strawberry Street to the north, River Alley to the east, Market Street to the south, and the properties at one hundred Market Street and one nineteen Strawberry Street to the west. This eight-story sandstone and brick masonry semi-detached structure initially featured elements of the French Renaissance revival architectural style, but currently expresses elements of the Art Deco style of architecture from the early twentieth century. It was originally designed and constructed by architects Charles Howard Lloyd and Warren Weaver for the Harrisburg Board of Trade and was one of Harrisburg's early skyscrapers. The original high-style facade was unfortunately removed in nineteen nineteen when it was rededicated as the Veterans Memorial Building, as the building expanded vertically and took on a new appearance. Character defining features include the granite water table, the ashlar, sandstone exterior on the first two stories with decorative cartouches, panels, and stone mullions between the windows, the beige brick masonry exterior on the upper floors, the floor-to-ceiling windows of the first floor, the green glazed paneling between the first and second floors, and on the rear of the building, the decorative sandstone panels inlaid into the brick facade at the top level, and a simple parapet with stately architectural embellishments. The main entryway features two sets of commercial-style full-view metal double doors topped with a large multi-plane, multi-pane plate glass transom. There is a secondary access on the River Alley elevation with similar double doors and plate glass transom within a recessed entrance accessed by concrete steps and featuring two metal wall sconces. Infiltration on the first and second floors of the front and side elevations consists of tall metal single-pane windows separated by the green glazed paneling. The upper floors feature ribbons of modern single-pane aluminum windows in different groupings. There are no windows on the rear elevation. Structure features an elevator penthouse on the roof and appears to be topped with a flat rubber roof. Despite the modern alterations, the building retains a substantial amount of architectural integrity as one of the few large historic commercial office buildings remaining downtown, and thus makes a significant architectural contribution to the street's gait and neighborhood. The Planning Bureau recommends that the applicant, recommends that the request be approved with the following conditions. Planning Bureau recommends the applicant considers retaining commercial space on the first floor, possibly in the area directly accessible from Market Street to promote a mixed-use character and activate the property throughout the day. The applicant should design all of the residential units on the upper floors to be at least visitable, if not fully ADA compliant, to ensure the units are accessible to as much of the population as possible. Finally, the Planning Bureau recommends the applicant coordinate with the City Engineers' Office on signage and markings for River Street which alert drivers to the increased presence of pedestrian traffic and make travel safer for all users of the street. Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved with the following reasons: The proposed project will ensure the continued use and occupancy of a, of an historically and architecturally significant building in downtown Harrisburg while contributing to the increasing number of residential units in downtown Harrisburg, contributing to the vitality of the neighborhood. The project is in conformance with all applicable zoning regulations, and finally, the proposed project will add new residents to the neighborhood and help activate Market Street and River Front Park on nighttime weekends while growing a customer base to support local businesses.
Thank you, Jeff. Could you state your name, address, and relationship to the project?
Sure. My name's Brad Jones. I'm the president and CEO of Harris Town Development Corporation. We're the owner of the project with our partners, and my address is in Strawberry Square.
Okay. Brad, you heard the conditions. Are you acceptable?
We are, yes, sir.
I know you were here once before, and I think I asked you...
We haven't given up yet.
I can't remember that far back. But I know you said about the parking, you encouraged them to go to the parking lots and...
Yes.
Still...
Yeah, as with, you know, many of our other projects, we, our most recent sizable project is across the square at the Menneker Building, which we developed and opened in twenty twenty-two. That's about twenty-eight units, a little smaller than this building, but very similar project. That's a six-story building, it's, and this is an eight-story building, but like at the Menneker, we encourage our tenants to find spaces in the garages and in other, you know, available parking spaces that are, you know, able, they're able, that they're able to rent.
Okay. And as far as the traffic, flow of traffic, is that going to be a concern with the residents or not?
I don't think so, and I know Jeffrey had, he always does a fantastic job on these case reports, and I always learn something more about the building, and after I hear his case report, I'm happier that we bought the building, even after hearing it the second time. So, it is a great building, and I don't think we're concerned about this increasing any real traffic. You know, from an automobile standpoint, we think it'll increase pedestrian traffic, which is light on that section of Market Street for sure. I guess, you know, the other thing that he raised to, to me in a private email, which was, you know, that Market Street may be turning two-way at some point, and there's been a discussion about that. I don't know how far that's gotten in the, in the process, but we're supportive of that idea, and that would certainly help maybe encourage us to put a, you know, some kind of commercial use on the first floor. Right now, we're just trying to look at it in the current condition and say, well, we could probably fit up to forty-eight units, which is six units per floor.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
Commissioners, that's all the questions I have. If you have any concerns or questions, I'll start with Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes, thank you, Joe. Fifty thousand square feet, forty-eight units, less scheduled area and gross area in the building. How big are these units? I didn't see anything marked in here.
Yeah, they're, they're mostly, I'd say, between...
Six and seven hundred square feet?
Yeah, six, seven hundred square feet for, you know, one bedrooms, and, you know, eight to, eight hundred to a thousand for two bedrooms. We just recently did a study, updated hour market study that said that, you know, the mix of one bedrooms to two bedrooms should be about sixty percent one bedrooms to forty percent two bedrooms.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
Okay.
Another question, then, and this is probably the bigger challenge, well, there's two others. There is discussion in here, and it was something that came up in my mind, about completely deactivating ground floor retail space for residential. And while it may or may not make sense in that particular person, that one building, doing so would create a major precedent in our downtown that I don't think the Planning Commission has been looking to see happen over the past number of years. Forty-six units versus forty-eight, that's four point one percent, I think, of your proforma there, to leave perhaps two units in the corner there as, as commercial?
Yeah.
Is that unreasonable, if that were to be a condition?
I'd like it to not be a condition, but more of a recommendation, just to be frank about it. I will say, just as an example, we just leased the, you know, first floor of Menneker. We left, we left the back of Menneker for apartments. There's three apartments on the back of that four-story building, and we were able to put those in there in a way that it's, they're very attractive units. They have a little courtyard in the back. We kept the first floor retail specifically because we want, we want to activate the street. That's part of our mission. And so, I think we're open to the idea, but I think, and, and, you know, you're right. I mean, we, it's a good thing to have, you know, activation on the street. I'd prefer it not to be a condition. I'd like to, us to be able to make the decision based on the market, right? But we are, if you look at when we, when we did the Benmar project, and I know you're very familiar with that, because it's your neighbor. So, you know, we have Alicia's Restaurant there on the first floor on one side, which was existing, and then we have not been able to get any traction on that, that other site at all, surprisingly. So, I'd like the flexibility to be able to, to, you know, make a decision on that, but I, but I'm supportive of your idea.
Right. I think the key thing is you have a key signpost as the end of the city at that location, and you have the opportunity, even if you do change some of the landscaping, I can easily see an opportunity for a coffee shop or small...
Sure.
Something that activates that, that corner that perhaps other downtown retail like the Menneker doesn't really, I mean, it's very vastly, two vastly different retail environments, you know, that versus the other. So, that, from a planning standpoint... environments, you know, that versus the other. So that, from a planning standpoint, and as importantly, a presidential standpoint, uh, that all of downtown Harrisburg, the first floor becoming residences, is what follows. So I have a difficult time not making that a condition. I'm not proposing the first floor, albeit I'm just proposing that enough, and I think six, seven hundred square feet for a kiosk. Exactly. Whether it's off Market Streets, probably what's in my mind.
Yeah.
Maybe it's on the other side that faces front.
Yeah, I mean, it, it probably makes the pro forma easier to complete, to complete initially because you're building two less units, right?
Well, there's that, absolutely.
You know, uh, so, look, I, I, I hear you and we've, I think if you look at most of our projects, um, you know, the, the Bog on Cranberry, we saved a retail space in the front. It was a small one, but it's, it's kind of getting at what you were saying. Benmar, we, we saved those retail spaces. Menneker, we saved a retail space, you know. Uh, all the projects we did on Chestnut Street all have first-floor retail spaces. So we're, you know, the El Sol Building, first-floor restaurant, right? So almost everything we've done in the last fifteen years on these apartment conversions, we've had an ability to do that. So I'm not opposed to-
And I know you've had some difficulty renting some of that first-floor space in different locations.
Yeah.
And that's not your fault. That's this unworkable uh parking lease deal that we have, which gives control over the downtown.
Right.
And I commend you for attempting to do things in the downtown because you look around, it's not happening because of that.
Yeah.
Um, but that takes me to my last question. And that is, several years ago, we spent a great deal of time looking at the impact of downtown office conversions and folks saying, well, we're going to urge people to go in the parking garages at, you know, a hundred and eighty dollars a month if you get the day-in, day-out plan, which nobody knows about, uh, where the other space is up to three hundred dollars a month for guaranteed space. Um, instead, what we're finding is the developers are dropping them into paying forty dollars for on-street. Uh, let's compete with the already established neighbors for the, the spaces that exist right now. And I think there was that point in time, and maybe, Sean, you may remember the exact numbers, but it was something like, what was it, three hundred fifty parking spaces or four hundred, and there were fifteen hundred permits that had been sold into downtown for those same spaces. How do we prevent that from happening here?
Yeah, it, it's a great question, and, and you and I have talked about this in other meetings, and, and it is a, uh, it is a conundrum because what really needs to happen, and I think you guys were trying to do this, which is, you know, we need to expand the residential parking. As the downtown is changing, and it will continue to change, uh, as, as a more of a residential downtown as it had, than it has been, right? So the way that's, my understanding, and you guys are the experts at this, but my understanding is the way it's supposed to work is that that, that residential system is supposed to flex and, and, and be adapted to the conditions of the downtown community, right? And so, so as, so because you're, you're allowing, you know, more, you want to create more residential, like for example, Pine Street, which someone argued could be more resident, could be more of a residential parking street as now, as opposed to a metered space.
Yeah, the problem comes back that the city has to pick up that difference under the deal.
I understand.
And I don't think we have the tax base to be, be subsidizing even further into the parking deal. So, I mean, I, on the surface, it makes sense. In many other places, it would be set up properly. The only thing I can offer you is fifty dollars a month for spaces in our lot that we do control on City Island.
Sure.
You know, that, which is not a bad walk from there.
Yeah.
Across the bridge, but um, that's a, that's a struggle for me. And again, we have the whole, even though it's not a required parking in the downtown, um, because that's the nature of the zoning that's there. Um, I'm having the trouble with this forty-dollar-a-month uh Wild West, sell a license to people coming in from out of the city to park on the, on-street park, and there's nothing available for people who've been there for years.
Yeah.
And these, and we've had elderly coming to us in past meetings, and that's been a major issue going up through Locust Street and moving up and I, and, and you're in a great position to be able to suggest ideas as well as, you know, the city. How do we solve it?
Sure. No, I understand it. I mean, look, uh, I'd like to see more residential parking spaces. I think we all would. Um, and, you know, we all know, I think, that there's going to be a lot of, we're either going to be looking at a lot of empty buildings like one twelve Market Street in the, in the next five to ten years. There's already a dozen buildings just like it or, or similar that are available for sale. And the, the thing that's working is residential. It's where, and we need more housing in the city. But we got to figure out a way to accommodate this issue, and it is a tricky one. I agree. Uh, we've had good luck in um not losing apartment tenants because of the parking deal. But it is not always, you do lose some, right? Because it's, it's an extra expense. If I'm out in some suburban apartment complex, I don't have to worry about that, right? It's one more thing to worry about and to pay for and so, um, I don't have any easy answers. I'd like to see the system um be a little more flexible with residential. There's plenty of spaces in the parking system. As we all know, there's, you walk, I walk the garages and count cars. That's how exciting my life is. Um, and uh, you know, there's nobody in the Market Square Garage, right? Nobody in it. Hundred cars maybe a day. It holds a thousand cars, maybe twelve, even twelve hundred. And so we should be making, we should be imploring the system to make those spaces more affordable for residents with less restrictions.
But I think, I think the problem is it's not even the system manager that's involved. It's, it's the PEDFA project.
Understood.
And it would have to be PEDFA who would decide they want to subsidize the development of downtown Harrisburg and the rebirth.
Yep.
And that's not happening.
Yeah, and I think we need to continue those conversations because it is a serious issue and um, I, when people ask me about parking, I'd say, look, I have a fifty-slide presentation. How much time do you have? Um, but we, we, that's, we, we have to attack that problem. In the next five to ten years, it's a serious one. You are right, absolutely right about it.
That's all for now. Thank you, Brad.
Uh, Commissioner Murray?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Commissioner Jordy?
I just wanted to echo that I am also in agreement about possibly leaving some of the first floor for retail. Um, beyond that, I think it's a great idea that you're actually having larger units because a lot of the downtown um projects that have come before us are studios in one bedroom. So, you know, thank you for at least um bringing forth a project that has larger bedrooms.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Joe?
Uh, I don't have any additional questions, but um Commissioner O'Toole, did you get a chance to? You might, you might have skipped Sean here, so. I, I, I would defer at this time to Commissioner O'Toole.
All right. Brad, what the, what do you look at for uh monthly rents for these?
Well, we're, we're, I mean, one of the reasons we uh haven't gotten this project finished yet um is that when we first started to price it, the pricing kind of went haywire. That's what I think many of you know. And uh, so interest rates and construction pricing kind of went haywire. So we're repricing this right now with a couple of different contractors to try to understand what the economics of it look like, and then we'll be better able to, you know, price the units. Um, I, I know where you're headed with this question, and I'll try to answer it a couple of different ways. Uh, we have taken a, a, uh, about sixty-three of our units and made them into affordable housing for our uh employees and for other folks in the market uh over the last three or four years. So we have uh units that are starting as low as around seven hundred dollars a month and going up to about nine fifty a month. And in that range, we also subsidize uh at about a hundred and fifty dollars a month for our employees as well to live in those units. So, so uh twenty, twenty-five percent of our portfolio is in that, that range of sort of, I'll call it workforce housing market. Does that help?
Yeah. Out of those sixty-three, how many are, are, are filled by your employees?
Uh, I'd say about twenty. Twenty, about twenty units are filled, and the rest are in the marketplace.
All right.
Uh. And we are open to, you know, looking at creating some affordable units in this project, if that's your question?
Well, this project, any project, I mean, with the affordable housing crisis in this, in this town and in, in this country, I just don't understand. I mean, to justify your tax exemption, why you aren't trying to put more of them out there? And the, and the ones you have out there for your employees.
Yeah.
But that's, I, I see no charity there. I'm sorry.
I don't understand the, the tax exemption. We're paying full real estate taxes, just like everybody else.
You're five oh one-
We're not a five oh one C three.
You are not?
No, we are not. We are a five oh one C four. We're an economic development corporation.
Okay, so you're-
We are not, we are not a charitable organization.
Okay, but you're tax exempt.
No, we are not tax exempt.
On your five, if, if you're a five oh one C four, you're tax exempt.
We are taxed from, for federal taxes only. But we're paying real estate taxes, is my point, just like everyone else. Yep.
I, I understand that. But I, I just feel that the, well, yeah, I, I, I just feel you should feel more of an obligation to try to put uh affordable housing out there for people other than your employees.
Sure, and, and we are. And we have another, as I said, we have about sixty-some apartments that are in that range, so there's another forty people in the market. You know, we'd like to serve more people in that area, and we'll certainly try to do that with this project if we can, but I, I've seen the numbers and they're tough. So it'll be hard. Um, it's hard to make the numbers work, uh, you know, I mean, we would have started this project if we thought we could have done it a few years ago. Now, in the meantime, the first floor bank has left, and the second floor office tenant has been relocated. So we have an opportunity to now sort of take a fresh look at it.
All right. Uh, who, who, who makes up uh Veterans Building investors?
Uh, it is uh Select Capital Commercial Properties and Harris Town.
All right, nothing further.
Okay. Um, I'll go to the public. If anyone's worried against this project, state your name and address, and I'll start to my left. State your name and address.
My name's Ken Stanoff. Why does it call better?
Yeah, uh, so the building was purchased by Dolphin County uh back, I don't know, in the eighties, I think. And um, the county commissioners, uh, one of the county commissioners, uh, his father was the, I think, the regional national commander of the American Legion. Um, and they wanted to name the building after him. And uh, so they did that, and they called it the Veterans Building, and his picture is on the uh front of the building, and we told his family that we would continue to leave it there and, you know, respect that, and that's why it's called the Veterans Building, so.
I understand the building.
Oh, it's, I, that was just chosen, I mean, somewhat serendipitously, but because it was called the Veterans Building. I think it was, it was a matter of convenience.
The third leg.
Yeah, I'll bet you are. Yeah, he's kind of a legend. Yeah.
Okay. Derek? Anyone from the center worried against the project? Anyone to my right? My commissioners, uh, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I would be prepared to make a motion uh to approve the project with a condition of um probably the equivalent of two of the units, which I guess is about twelve, fourteen hundred square feet of retail or commercial or some other non-residential use uh on the ground floor. Uh, the only other condition I may say, I guess it would be a suggestion we'll put under that category, and that is that um you do, and I'm putting my planning, or my parking authority chair hat on here, that you do send people over to see us in our empty garages and that they do look at the plan that's in place and that allows them to stay in the garage till, I think, ten in the morning or eight in the morning, and then be back at five, and they get two night, two days during the week, and they get the weekends, which a lot of people, it's not well-publicized and it really needs to be. Uh, it's kind of halfway. It's not great, but it's not terrible.
Yep.
So.
Understood.
Is there a second on the motion? There's no second?
I'll second that.
It's been noted a second for approval with the added conditions?
One's a condition, and then I was adding the, the suggestion to my monologue. Yes, yes.
Well, well, the first condition was reflective of one of the conditions in the case report.
Yeah.
You were making a recommendation, Vern is-
Correct.
Making this more of a firm condition.
Okay, I just, the language is a little unclear.
That's, that's what we're, item one is what I'm making a, a condition of my, of my proposal. Um, you know, the, the visitable aspect, uh, I have no problem with adding that as an addition because I think it makes good common sense, visitable, and it doesn't look like your plan needs much done to it to achieve that, from what I see that, that my design has in there. And of course, the signage and marking is, is, should be included. Does that make sense, Neil?
It does, so I would say a forty percent approval.
Yeah. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is the uh person who seconded agrees with that? It's noted a second for approval with the additions. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Upstanding. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. I have a, a little something for you guys. A fifty-year anniversary book that I thought you might enjoy.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we're on item number three. This is a subdivision plan. Application for eleven oh three South Front Street. It's own RF. It's filed by Stevens, Diller's, Tunnel to Towers Foundation. It's to subdivide the existing parcel into two individual lots.
Uh, yes, so uh, this is the first, I guess, component of the overall um project here, uh, but the applicants did submit two separate um applications to subdivide preliminary, final subdivision, and then a preliminary land development, as opposed to more traditionally a preliminary, final uh subdivision and land development plan. Um, so the applicants are proposing to subdivide the existing parcel into two individual lots, uh, which will each accommodate a supportive housing project. And the applicant has submitted an accompanying preliminary land development plan uh for the northernmost lot. Uh, the property eleven oh three South Front Street is a fifteen-acre lot, which is largely vacant, although it still retains some of the, of the building foundations and site infrastructure from when the property accommodated a steel mill. Currently, it accommodates a critical connection of the Capitol area greenbelt, but little else in the way of development or active uses. Property is bounded by the property eleven oh one South Front Street to the north, railroad tracks to the east, the property eleven oh five South Front Street to the south, and the Susquehanna River to the west. The Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. The proposed subdivision will create individual lots, which are in conformance with the applicable zoning regulations regarding development standards, and the proposal will help effectuate the development of transitional housing uh across two separate projects, one for homeless veterans of the subject property and another for the broader homeless population at a future parcel to the south.
Okay, um. Thank you, Jeff. I'm sorry. Uh, could you state your name and address and relationship?
My name is Bruce Grossman. I represent, I'm attorney representing the Stevens, Diller Tunnel to Towers Foundation. Uh, my office address is three six three one North Front Street. Uh, joining me tonight are two officials from the Tunnel to Towers Foundation that I'd like to introduce.
They, they have to introduce for themselves.
All right.
They've got to speak.
Thank you very much. My name is Linda Cox. I'm the Associate Vice President for Government Affairs and Development for the Tunnel to Towers Foundation.
Louis Menendez, Director of Construction for the Homeless Veterans Program. Um, seventy Oakwood Avenue, Montclair, New Jersey.
Um, Ms. Cox would like to uh introduce um the foundation and its mission to the panel um and discuss uh why they chose this project.
We, we already had that. I think we- Yeah, we got to get to the point.
All right. Um, let me uh, this is a, excuse me.
No, I think Jeffrey-
No, I, I-
It's rendering.
Can we see what's being replaced?
We were, um, it's kind of difficult. This is an artist- This is an artist's rendering of the proposed project. It's an artistic rendering. It's not exact in all its details. That will be set forth in the land development plan. Simply the subdivision itself is to take the northernmost eight point five acres of the property. That would be the property abutting the employee parking lot from the Riverside Office Center. And there is an existing road already down to Veterans Road. And so that would pass through this property, and there is the emergency access along the river down to Veterans Road. So this property would go from just about before the railroad tracks on the east, down to the river on the west. The property line with the general authority of the Riverside Office Center, and then an east-west line at its southern border. That would leave approximately six acres between Veterans Road and the proposed project. So that is the elements of the subdivision.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, I have no questions on this subdivision. If you have questions or concerns, I'll start with Commissioner.
Good evening. I guess the first question I have is, I would like to hear about how you have addressed the number one concern the planning commission had previously relative to the green belt, whether we're going to get a gap in that after ninety or a hundred years that it's been in existence.
I don't believe that that will, sir, but ever since the last meeting, the foundation has had a meeting with its executive vice president, a representative of the Green Belt Association, and the National Nine Eleven Trail. There's been further discussions, and as will be discussed in the land development plan, the Green Belt Association has been offered passage along the eastern border of the property, a sidewalk next to the access road. And that would be.
Where, can you mark, can you please mark where that is? Okay.
That will be shown on the land development plan. There's the access road, and the sidewalk would be parallel to that. Again, that would be like that.
It follows, it follows the contour of the road.
I guess we're looking, trying to look at the plans we have here. We're not seeing it.
Well, they're, they're in the land development plan. Oh, okay.
Right. For, what is the width to that sidewalk?
I'm sorry?
What is the width to that sidewalk, sir?
I believe, I believe it's five feet.
You also have, Louis, would you discuss the grade that, that sidewalk?
Yeah, so, so the sidewalk follows the road, so it's pretty much, it's a level sidewalk with obviously obvious pitch for drainage, but it follows the contour of the road from the property line all the way up to the, the other property line prior to the crossover at the bridge. So we, we are providing access, pedestrian access across this road to our property line, which connects, or at least provides, an opportunity to walk on a sidewalk or ride on this road to the access road in, beyond our property.
Matt, what's the nature of that road? Is that a gravel or?
No, it's paved.
It will be paved?
It is paved.
Okay.
This road is existing. And it connects, like I said, like we said, the Volva Village to the access road here on South Front Street, leading out to Sycamore.
Now, I guess the other question is, once I get to that point, and I leave your property, I believe, because the other six acres is separate. So we still don't have a guarantee that it's going to be allowed to be continued past that property line under this proposal.
Well, in, in the sketch plan review of the Eden Village, I believe, a couple months ago, the applicants for the Eden Village did express support for retaining the existing connection there. I think the major issue with what the applicants are proposing, and as they well know, is that the Dolphin County General Authority has pretty much indicated in no uncertain terms that they will be preserving or reserving no additional space for the green belt. So once they hit the northern edge of their property line, there's no sidewalk there. There's going to be no reserved space for the types of children and elderly that will then have to ride through the parking lot of the PennDOT facility, mixing with drivers there, which is frankly, in my opinion, very dangerous. You have people there that are going back there to get their license, because they lost them probably for poorly driving. And I think what that ends up doing is it ends up mixing, again, vulnerable trail users in with, in a completely unregulated parking lot with drivers.
Mr. Chairman, with all respect, the issue before the panel is the subdivision at this time. We understand that the issue will be addressed, but the issue before the panel is the subdivision.
That's correct.
I have no more questions. I'd like to hear the public's comments when we get past the commissioners and reserve a right to come back.
Commissioner O'Toole?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate for, for the public here, what we just stated, that we have two, two matters that are in front of us. The, the first is just a simple subdivision. It's, i- i- it's easier of the two. The next one, so if we, if we get through this without addressing the issues you thought we should be addressing, it's because we have a second one on the agenda. That's all I have.
Yeah, that's correct. I was trying to keep them separate, because I knew there would be more issues on the other one. So Commissioner Merrick?
Thank you. So for the proposed subdivision, your entity is proposing to subdivide these lots, but you are only taking ownership of proposed Lot Three?
That's correct.
Yes.
Who is taking ownership of residual Lot One?
It's talked about being an entity related to Eden Village, an unrelated entity. We have no definite knowledge that they are purchasing it or anything like that.
And I'm assuming that entity is the veterans' housing?
No, it's a third entity.
Third entity.
So what you see on the board as residual Lot One is what will be left of the, originally the parcel was approximately twenty acres.
Yep.
The veterans' outreach took the southernmost five acres.
Right.
The Tunnel to Towers Foundation is proposing to take the northernmost eight point five acres, and when you do your math, that leaves about six acres in the middle. So residual Lot One is what's left of those six acres.
Oh, the fourteen, I read.
Yeah, unclaimed. I'm just trying to understand who's taking responsibility, like, the ownership of, of the last one we get to these future questions that remain on the development of it. That's the only question I have at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Jordan?
As far as the subdivision's concerned, I have no questions.
And Joe?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. We'll go to the public on this. This is, remember, this is only for the subdivisions. Have any concerns to my left? No concerns? In the middle? Any concerns with the subdivision on my right?
Hello, my name's Ed Jarek. I live at fifteen twenty-one North Second Street, apartment number one in Midtown. My concern really about all this, I just heard about this, you know, a day or two ago, and was mainly the green belt. I don't know what all is going on here, all the various pieces of land development, but when we're done, we can't screw up the green belt, right? That's been here a long time. The whole county enjoys that, right? That's a big organization. And I just think all you lawyers and people have to figure it out, so that does not get, get messed with. But to the point about this subdivision plan, just as a non-expert, just as a normal citizen, I don't think the applicant has convinced me that it's needed to be done now. My concern is, you know, when all these homeless, the veterans park, you know, it was originally proposed as, the other project was fifteen quaint, you know, little transitional housing, and now, you know, if I'm reading this right, we're going to have sixty-four units plus twenty more. And now it sounds like we're spinning off another lot, which I assume smart people get another sixty-four in there, you know, like, I know this is done in pieces, and there's little incremental spots to it, but, like, who's got the big master plan where we're ending up? I mean, there's a big impact. I think it's risky anytime you take any kind of individuals, certain economic or social problem, and concentrate them too closely together. And so that's my concern, and for that reason, I, I hope you, a little table or delay or deny this subdivision plan, because I don't think it's going to stop them from doing the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Because commissioners, can I get a motion on the subdivision?
Hold on, Joe.
Oh, did I miss it?
In answer to that question, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the very eastern part is in the five-hundred-year flow plane next to the railroad tracks and Paxton Creek, and the very western part, obviously, is the river. But in between is the hundred-year flow plan, and all of the development would be done in the hundred-year flow plan.
Yeah, just to correct that.
I know, yeah.
The whole property is in the hundred, five-hundred.
It's all being developed on the five-hundred.
Yes.
The house is there a long time?
I'm sorry?
The house is in this area a long time. Don't be as hard as you are. Was the steel moved back in the late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen? It was in a census record, right?
Not as residences, sir.
I mean, historically, the property has been an industrial site. I think it's remained an industrial site until today.
Okay. Here was the.
Hi, Rebecca Lee Hart, six oh nine Shower Street in the city. So I do have issue with the proposal similar to Ed Jarek's comment of the subdivision. And I also have some history I think is important to, to chat about, VOPA. At the time, I was the president of the Shypoke Neighborhood Association. We did end up putting forth a letter of recommendation for that project, but with a lot of dialogue and discussion that has not occurred to my best knowledge at all with the community at large in Shypoke. I know there's been a lot of public publicity and putting forth articles in the Berg, but not actually talking to the citizens, which are deeply impacted by a very complicated issue at the moment, which I touched upon earlier. Additionally, VOPA originally wanted to, I believe it was fifteen parcels of land, to rezone, to, to basically accommodate for the, the tiny homes, and we really adamantly fought that, because we realized what was being asked was the ability, while it seemed benign at the time, it was the ability for the future build of really anything, right? Because if you re-zoned it to allow for tiny homes, you re-zoned it to allow for really sort of a free-for-all build. And I'm really happy that we did that, but I feel like I'm living a nightmare that here we are again, and we haven't even seen VOPA be occupied. We, we signed off on something that was sort of experimental in a way. We haven't seen that. We don't know what that looks like for us as a community. I haven't heard VOPA checking back in with us personally to, you know, garner any feedback. One of the other things that struck me about VOPA, and we have to talk about VOPA, because it's laying the foundation and Peggy selling all the land, right? It's all her land. It's similar. So, you know, I, I remember and I recollect that at the time, the, the tiny homes were not going to have showers inside, and, and we were being told that that was purposeful, because they wanted to really bring people back into a community building setting and really keep an eye on the folks and really tend to them. And I thought, okay, that's, that's meaningful, right? Like, and then when it ended, I saw an article in the Berg, and now they're essentially, you know, standalone homes, so that, we weren't told that upfront. And the zoning passed, and now it's switched, and maybe it's all fine. I don't know, but I think that's the point. We don't know. And now you're telling me that you're going to parcel off and subdivide these two pieces of land, and I'm not really sure what this even means for us. Not to mention the fact that, as stated, where's the needs assessment? This is the one that we're talking about tonight, that we do know who's going to occupy it. Again, it's being slated for veterans, and I must have to presume, because I'm familiar with the folks that, and working when I was the president of the Neighborhood Association, the Capital Area Coalition on Homelessness, that we did not have, we, we barely had enough to fill the fifteen tiny homes. I think that they were looking at the broader, like, central Pennsylvania to fill those homes. And so that doesn't alleviate the stress that we are under. And then, of course, it's just the open dialogue again of what, you know, Ed Jarek said as well about, and I touched on earlier, that everything is being placed in one tiny concentrated area, and I haven't heard anyone, when they presented this plan, to talk about Shypoke putting up against it, and this is even closer to us. You know, I have serious, serious fears of what this looks like, and I agree, once you subdivide this land, listen, it's strategic. Just like it was strategic to try to pass, you know, the, the rezoning for tiny homes and spaces where tiny homes were never meant to go. I hope that the VOPA project works out. I ended up giving it my, you know, my, my letter of recommendation. I think I signed that letter personally, and I'd like to see it be successful. But we need to see what happens. What does that look like for a whole community of folks with little kids and elderly folks that are really under a lot of stress and strain right now, and aren't feeling like we even have a voice in the room? You know, I implore everyone here, please, please, give our community time to interact with these folks, understand what this plan really is. What is the full intent? What is the full scope of the ultimate picture? What does it mean for us? We're not saying that we, we're nimby and we don't want folks in our backyard. We're saying we want meaningful, thoughtful approaches to solving a problem that involves us, people that also live here too. So, you know, I thank everyone for their time, and please, please, I, I hope we could get a community presentation before we subdivide the land of what this really looks like. I'd love to see it down at the park. It's a great place for us to meet. Not put it through the Berg. Talk to the folks that really live there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have relevant information to that. Ms. Cox has information about reaching out to the Shypoke Association.
Chairman, my office reached out to Ms. Whitaker on April twenty-fourth to try to connect with them. We offered a visit that I was having the next week in Pennsylvania, and offered to set up a virtual call or come and talk at a different time. We never received your response.
I'm not bothered by the Shypoke Neighborhood Association, but what I would do is import you, and I think you just, in the PWA, send out a mailer to every resident, and make sure, also, I, my take is that on the Shypoke Neighborhood Association is that some folks within that association would like to distance themselves altogether from any of the homeless issues happening, because they're worried about the property values. I hate to say that, but that's, you know, that's the word in neighborhood. And so that's probably why they didn't respond to you, but they don't speak for everyone.
Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm going to cut you off. I don't want to get back and forth. I was trying to keep this to, everybody can talk, but I'm not going to get into this back and forth. And you said you've contacted, she's, she's not, but that's a good suggestion. Send out letters, whatever else you can do for the community. But right now, we're on the subdivisions. And I asked the people in the middle, I asked the people on the left. Now we're going back again. Now, I gave you your chance. Right, so we, we, we'll get to that. Okay, commissioners, we're on the subdivision.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? This has been moved as second for approval with the subdivision. Uh, there's no conditions?
Uh, no, that, that's all right.
All those who favor a stick by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes, opposed.
One, two opposed. Um, all those who favor, raise your hand. Motion, carry. Thank you. Okay, now we're on the land of all of us land. This is a preliminary land development plan application for eleven oh three South Front Street. It's zone RF, it's filed by Stephen Stiller's tunnels to tower foundations associated with the construction of transitional housing development featuring sixty-four units, multi-family buildings, including services, where residents in twenty of these types comfort homes.
Uh, yes, uh, so the second component, um, of this project, uh, is a proposal to construct a transitional housing development for homeless veterans, featuring two types of housing accommodations along with associated site and access improvements. Project includes a mixed-use building with tenant services and community functions on the first floor and sixty-four units on the two floors above, and twenty detached comfort homes. Project receives zoning hearing board approvals for the required zoning relief requests at their June twenty-second, twenty twenty-four meeting. Property eleven oh three South Front Street is a fifteen-acre lot, which is largely vacant, though it still retains some of the building foundations and site infrastructure from when the property accommodated a steel mill. Currently, it accommodates a critical connection of the Capital Area Green Belt, but little else in the way of development or active uses. Property is bounded by the property eleven oh one South Front Street to the north, railroad tracks to the east, property eleven oh five South Front Street to the south, and the Susquehanna River to the west. The Planning Bureau staff recommends that their request be approved with the following conditions. The applicant should redesign the pedestrian access through the middle of the project site, connecting the front entrance of the apartment building with the riverfront overlook, using raised crosswalks across the drive-iles to prioritize pedestrian safety and ADA accessibility. Uh, the applicant should install landscape screening around the proposed parking areas in order to prevent headlights spill over into residential units. Uh, the Planning Bureau recommends that the applicant continue coordination with the city arborist regarding required landscape screening and trees, retention of existing mature trees, and the installation of native plants and pollinator plants in landscaped areas throughout the site, and more specifically, around the proposed stormwater detention basins. And finally, the project will accommodate a relocated footprint of the Capital Area Green Belt, including the removal of the proposed vehicular gate and fence across the existing connection to the Green Belt, where the emergency access road along the western portion of the site interacts, intersects with the Dolphin County General Authority property. Based on the proposed site design, the Green Belt can be accommodated across the southern boundary of the property, connecting the existing bridge over the railroad tracks to the emergency access road along the western boundary of the property. Uh, Planning Bureau staff recommends the request be approved for the following reasons. The applicants have received approval from the zoning hearing board for the various zoning relief requests. Needed to effectuate the project as proposed, uh, the proposed project will meet a critical need, housing for homeless individuals, and will specifically target a group, veterans, who are disproportionately represented in the homeless population, will provide quality accessible units that improve their standard of living, and will introduce a housing approach that may be a template for future projects. Uh, the project represents a continuation of recent development projects in this area intended to provide accommodations and servicing for those, services for those experiencing homelessness. And finally, if the recommended conditions of approval are adopted, proposed project will result in improvements to the site that will provide benefits to the greater public welfare, including increased vegetation, ecological biodiversity, improved connectivity and mobility for project residents, and retention and formalization of Green Belt access for project residents and the general public.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Um, I believe everyone's here. Are you a new person?
I'm a new person. My name is Betsy Davison. I'm an engineer with H. Edward Black and Associates in Harrisburg. We prepared the land development plans.
Okay. Everyone heard the staff report. Are you acceptable of the conditions?
Um, the conditions are acceptable, uh, except as to the fourth. I'm not sure I understand that we did, uh, include access for the Green Belt along the eastern border, as I previously explained. So, um, I'm not sure if that, uh, is satisfied, what Mr. Knight is referring to.
It is not. Um, as I noted previously during the former discussion, um, this is going to dump people into a street. This is not intended to provide safe, uh, formalized passage for the Green Belt or retention of safe movement for Green Belt users. It is intended to try and, um, you know, just make a frankly minimal effort to accommodate the Green Belt and to make a planning commission, uh, believe that they're, you know, operating with the various partners here to actually retain the Green Belt and to retain this critical piece of infrastructure. As noted, uh, the applicants are well aware, 'cause we discussed this at the zoning relief request, that this, that the county has no intentions of providing any additional footprint for the Green Belt outside of what they already provide on the riverfront side of the office building connecting to the emergency access road. Uh, the design that the applicants have has the fence enclosing their project on the eastern side of this access road. This, having the Green Belt go across the southern portion of the track, uh, southern portion of the property and along the access road would have no engagement with the residents. It would not require the facility to open up to the general public and can easily be accommodated on what is an existing access road for emergency vehicles. And frankly, I continue to be kind of baffled by the complete refusal to, you know, adopt a frankly common sense proposal, I think.
Mr. Chairman, is that, um, is the word intended, or that somehow we were intending to?
Why don't we switch? This'll be fun. Or I can stand up and talk to the microphone.
That's completely fine. Our only intent is to take care of the veterans that need it. There's no intention to be nefarious. There's no intention to prevent people from having fun. There's no intention to do anything nefarious to this trail. Our only intent is to take care of our veterans. This project brings supportive services and permanent affordable housing to our veteran community that's in need, whether they are already homeless or at risk of becoming homeless or experiencing some level of housing insecurity. That is the only thing we care about. I'm the daughter of a soldier. My father was twenty-seven years in the Army. I raised a sailor. He's currently deployed with the USS Washington. All I care about is the veterans. I spent my career supporting the veterans in cyber and defense and in big data issues. All we're trying to do is provide our nation's heroes with a dignified way to live without having hundreds of people traipse through their front yard. We're offering the eastern portion, that road, completely fine. Go through it. That's totally fine. We don't wanna stop everyone from enjoying the beauty that is the Susquehanna area. This is a beautiful, beautiful state. I spent a lot of my time in Pennsylvania. I was in high school in northern Maryland. It's a beautiful Commonwealth here. We are protecting the dignity of these veterans, the beauty of our veteran community, and I'd like to address the bringing them together issue as well. When you bring veterans together, they hold each other accountable. Did any of you serve on the commission, may I ask?
No, no, I'm, I'm a veteran.
Thank you, sir. What branch were you in?
Army.
Army, there you go. So, you know, when you bring veterans together, they automatically adjust and they become, they fall into their chains of command, they hold each other accountable. It's the rising tide that raises all ships. As a Navy mom, I have to use a Navy reference. Right? That's what we're doing here. We're providing the services that these veterans need. Our completely whole eighteen and nineteen-year-old young men and women raise their right arm, and they write us a blank check for an amount up to and including their life. The least we can do is allow them to have dignity when they're struggling, to overcome their PTS, to overcome the separation issues, to overcome the, the self-medication from trauma that they've experienced. So with due respect, sir, I take umbrage with your insinuation that we're trying to do anything but support our veterans. We are willing to work with the different associations. We're willing to find a solution. It cannot be along the river. Thank you.
There's frankly, nothing that the Planning Bureau has recommended or that we've discussed with the footprint of the trail contradicts anything that the applicants just said. They can still have dignity. This is not people traipsing through their front yard. This is people going along a trail that's already been there. It will be fenced off. It can be cut off from visibility with landscaping. You know, if you look at the Tunnels of Towers website, their project in Houston, Texas, and where it makes their reusing a hotel for a very similar type project, they're going to have, I think, twenty-four comfort homes and a similar amount of units in the hotels. The comfort homes are located on the existing draw, parking lot on site with literally the backs of the comfort homes right up against the fence that is right alongside a publicly accessible road. Do those people, do those people not have any of the dignity that, uh, the applicants just referred to? Of course they do. There's nothing about the proximity of the trail to them. In fact, it gives them more dignity. It gives them mobility. It says, "You are worthy of being connected in the same way that the rest of the community is." I don't understand this insistence that somehow saying, "Well, you can walk along a sidewalk and get dumped into a road here and drive through and bike through this parking lot," is somehow affecting the dignity of the residents of this facility. We are not against the use. We are not against the number of units. We are not against services provided here. We're basically not against any of the design of this project, except for the continued refusal to retain the Green Belt on site.
If I, if I may, um, we, we continue to discuss other projects that we are developing, and we do have quite a number of projects that we are developing across the country similar to this one, and they all have perimeter fence and security. The two projects we, excuse me, which you just referenced in Houston, the fencing is going up. It's only happens to be part of a phase two that we're undertaking now. There are, there are, there is a fence on site for perimeter security, and we're continuing the remaining part as part of phase two, which deals with not twenty-four homes, fourteen homes in actuality that we're putting in, but it creates the village and it creates that perimeter security that's important to us from an operational perspective to maintain security within our facility. We're able to monitor the comings and goings of our, 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 our residents. So it is a secure space that we are deploying on all of our projects, and this has come to be as part of our study in developing our program as to how best to create that village so that it's a safe environment and not set up our tenants or our, our residents for, for failure with outside influence that may come into or in contact with that perimeter security. That is something that is critical to us. It's something that our residents have no failure. There's no room for, there's no room for failure here. So if we're able to maintain the general public at a distance away from private property, which this happens to be, it's something that we, it, we hold paramount in our projects to make sure that they are not set up for failure. Any contact with outside, uh, individuals that are not vetted, and we can vet the general public. We don't know who walk, would walk through there. It's a wooded environment. Anything can go, and that is something that we are not, uh, in a position to compromising.
Okay, I'm gonna let Jeff respond, and then I'm gonna go to the commissioners.
We're not asking to let the trail through their project. We're saying, put a fence up. Put an eight-foot fence up, ten-foot fence up, ask for variance for the fence, if that is your issue. But that does not seem to be the issue. The, the issue seems to be with the presence of the trail itself, not in how it's located across the property. And frankly, you didn't answer the question about how the units, the comfort home units in the Houston project can be located directly adjacent to a right-of-way, like, you could touch the buildings from what I saw in the rendering, and how that was okay, but that having a, having the Green Belt run at, along the southern edge and then the western edge of this, which would be much further away from all of the comfort homes than what your other project has shown, is somehow inconceivable.
I think we should focus on this project, and we have a similar situation.
Okay, excuse me. Excuse me. I said, we'll come back to you.
Oh, sorry.
'Cause I'm getting, I gotta get to commissioners and their concerns. Commissioner Mackenzie.
Again, I'm just, I'm distressed that our input at the prior meetings was completely ignored, uh, from...
I disagree strongly.
Sir, you are not being asked to speak at this time.
I'm out of words.
Please respect me. I respected you in your conversation. We take...
Let me speak the truth.
I was at the meeting. I know what I said. There's videotapes. It's rebroadcast on HBG.
And to tell you exactly what was done. The meetings were held.
Excuse me.
Sir, I'm gonna make my statement, please.
Excuse me, it's very, wait a minute. We, we... You know yourself, you're a lawyer. We gotta keep order here. You'll get your turn to respond. You don't holler out when my commissioner is speaking. If you continue to do this, I'm gonna ask you to leave. You'll get your chance.
Again, thank you, Jim. Again, the point is not that, from my viewpoint, this is not a sham game to oppose the goal of the program that you have, and, and I can see how it could be viewed that way from the outside. What this is about is why does the other forty-nine thousand five hundred residents of Harrisburg lose the ability to properly utilize a pathway and a resource that is very heavily marketed in our region and used, and is privately funded by donations and volunteers and groups that support it in order to support your project? What I don't understand, and maybe your engineer can help me, I'm seeing an awful lot of fill in the floodplain. Uh, I don't know, has that report been done? I'm looking at the plan here. It looks like you're putting about fourteen feet of fill. Uh, if I look at, uh, drawing two of twenty-one in the upper end of the site there, I do look at a hillside that's about nine to ten feet. I assume that's been calculated in, and I'm not gonna, Ed Black, you guys are very good, so there's... But I guess the, what I'm saying is there's a tremendous amount of regrading happening on this site as part of making the building happen. What I don't understand in all of this is why, we can talk about coming along the river and turning up at the south end. At the same time, I don't even understand why we couldn't come off of the Dolphin, adjacent to the Dolphin County, uh, property, the general authority property there, stay on, I'll call it the north side, this thing's cockeyed the way the whole city sits, but run along the side of the parking lot, cross-grade on that infill that you're putting the nine or ten feet of fill, and catch the sidewalk mid-site and provide, maybe not perfection, but a much better flow that, that goes to our planners' concerns about putting five-year-old children on bicycles in the middle of an active parking lot, uh, you know, filled with uncontrolled people in order to, you know, yes, it would require two or three of the homes to adjust. I know these guys are good, and I know they can make it work. So that's the first question I'd like to have answered.
Can I...
Please.
So, two twenty-one is...
Yes.
Those are all... There is a lot of fill, debris, a lot coming down on the side. I'm, because there's a lot of, these areas with water that's raining.
Exactly.
By service, we're... So, on rating plan, I'm sure, four, we are doing earthwork. It is a no export site. We're not, we're not, all material on...
Sure. Makes sense.
And we are raising the building elevation slightly for brackets. But there is, we're not doing, um, we're still, we're on the south side accessing material, but we are not...
Uh, please, if you could, please read the grade at the, um, access road and the grade at the footing of, at the top of the hill there. I'm seeing, I think, and again, this is very small with what we're given...
Yeah. Don't even pose a...
Now, when I do that math, I come up with nine foot, ma'am.
Correct.
Okay.
But under the system, you know, now it's...
Right, and I'm not taking question, yeah, and I'm not questioning the land develop, the, you know, the, the Dolphin County Conservation District and everybody else and probably the Army Corps will get their nod at this, and, and the plan will be well, and you guys do good. My question just is, is with the amount of grading that's happening already, it doesn't seem inconceivable that these units that are on the topside closest to PennDOT couldn't be shoved over fifteen feet? We couldn't capture at the river, come along that property in something that can be controlled and safe? You have that nine-foot grade differential, which was my concern, which you've just verified, why one can't cut across grade, just like we do any site accessible ramps? Um, and again, it's not in a, it doesn't have to be ADA because this is not an ADA path, um, and connect down further on the site. And it seems like all the goals could be achieved, uh, or come much closer. I'm just saying, there are alternatives, and that the absolute refusal to say that anything can be done, uh, just... just astounds me.
Hey, I, we, I take exception to refusal. We have not refused to have a conversation about this important issue that we all need to resolve. That's why we came up with the situation along the road. It may not be what you deem to be a solution, but at the end of the day, it is a solution, because there is a path along the street, unless you can ride a bike on a sidewalk. You could ride a bike on the street that gives you access across that road to Sycamore. So there is a way to get out of that bridge or cross that road to a private road, which you have access, nobody can stop anybody from using that road on a bicycle, to another part of the trail to jump back on or go out to Sycamore. So it's there. And the conversations have been had with the folks at the Green Belt.
Well, hopefully, there's someone here who can explain those conversations from the Green Belt during the question-and-answer period. That's all for now, Joe.
Okay. Commissioner Olds.
Yes. Do you know how many homeless veterans there are in Harrisburg?
Well, you know, it's, it's not irrelevant, but it's not the accurate, most accurate data to the point in time, which is the oldest night I've been, even night that I've been in the shelter. It's up to thirty-five. Dolphin County, it's up to almost, I think, eighty-five. And in the surrounding counties, it's probably close to two hundred.
All right.
In the state, it's over nine hundred.
Okay. All right, yeah, other than that, I just want to reiterate what Verdant said. I'm just kind of disappointed that we're put in the middle of this. We've had situations like this before, where we've had the developer and the, and the community turns out very much against the developer, and what we typically do is we table those, tell them to meet and come back, and they always do. Even when very contentious, doing contentious meetings, they come back a month later, they have a solution. And granted, we didn't do that, but this issue came late, a month ago, two months ago. And I'm, I'm just baffled as to why we haven't had a solution yet. That's all I have.
Commissioner Murray.
Yeah, thank you. I do have a few questions. A couple just have to do with the use itself. Could you explain to me what a comfort house is and what that entails?
So a comfort home is a, what's called a microhome. We happen to define it as a comfort home. These are custom-built five-hundred-square-foot units with a living room, bedroom, galley kitchen, and a bathroom, all compliant or convertible to ADA if need be. They're all accessible. We did speak earlier on on accessibility for visitability, which all our homes comply. And these are unique to us. We've developed these with quite a bit of study on the, on the size or the proportion of these rooms, and we believe that we have the perfect solution for an individual to live in this home as, as an individual with all the amenities that they need to live as if they were in a regular home in society. So the comfort home is afforded to a specific veteran, and I think we may have talked about this early on last time when we met. These are afforded to perhaps the older veteran, the sixty-year-old veteran, sixty-five-year-old veteran, who may not be reintegrating into society anytime soon. These are your Vietnam veteran. These are folks that are still out in society looking to find their footing. These homes, we, depending on their status, honorably discharged, they're exemplary individuals. They're able to maintain their, their own homes. Those are the ones that we are affording these opportunities. They can live here for the rest of their lives.
I'd just add, I think it's important to note for those that may not have heard this already, this is permanent housing. This is not temporary, it's not shelter, it's not vagabonds. This is permanent, affordable, supported. Our veterans sign a year-long lease to start, they pay rent, up to thirty percent of their income. It's a low amount. This is not, that's why the comfort homes are there, for those that will be a long term.
The, the building, on the other hand, they're more, smaller, smaller units.
Yeah, that was my next question. Could you explain how you landed on needing sixty-four units? What is the square footage of those units?
The, the units that are in the building are slightly smaller, roughly around four hundred and change. And they vary because of the building, the way that it's designed, some are a little bit smaller, bigger and smaller than the other. But those are more toward geared toward the younger veteran, the ones that are struggling, that, you know, they need, they need some help to get to find their footing once again and be able to, at some point, we consider it a success, when they turn around and says, "I'm moving out," right? This is more of, "I'm ready to go back into the next step in my life. I'm moving back into society. I've found a job. I'm able to sustain myself." That particular unit is geared towards, they can stay as long as they have to. They can stay there forever. But our hope is that through going through this program, taking advantage of the services that are offered to them, that they're able to achieve our objective of getting them back on their feet and back out into society.
Okay. So another question related to the apartment building, and you're sort of touching on it, but without seeing any plans of what the units look like within the building. Are there amenities being furnished inside of this building? Is there communities? You said that there's services, but how are they being provided in the space?
Right, so the building consists of three levels. The ground level is where we talk about these amenities and services. So the ground floor is where administration resides. As far as amenities, we have day rooms, we have a gymnasium, we have a workforce room where training for reintegrating through the workforce is provided. We help them write resumes, interview, give them those skills that they gained in the military, figure out how to leverage those back in society. So we have those services on the ground floor. In addition to that, there's clinical service that we provide with, as far as psychological support. We provide substance abuse. We don't treat it here to the extent where if it's something that needs rehabilitation, we will refer to a facility that best deals with somebody who is extremely affected by the abuse. Same thing with PTSD. We do treat it to a certain extent, something that has, needs clinical support. We provide those, that placement in a facility through the VA that allows them to deal with those issues. So as far as the, the, the services that are concerned, it's everything that you would need to live in a, in a village where you don't have to, if you don't want to, go out to a gym. You have the facilities here. You want to stay, and I know Linda spoke about the brotherhood that exists amongst veterans. You can, you can stay here. You have a room with televisions. We have a AV setup for large format screening. So we have a screening room, football games, and through the community, we end up creating that support that come in and help us during Super Bowl or any other, you know, important event. They can have it inside their, their home. This is really their residence, this is where they live. The upstairs, and to your point, there's, there's studio apartments. They have a bathroom. Each room has a bathroom, has a kitchenette, so that they are able to cook and bake, that you can cook, and has a full-size bed for, that they, they use along with any other furniture that they need. We provide as part of the furnishing fit-out for that facility. And those are on multiple floors. And each floor will also have a case manager that deals with the individual tenants that they are responsible for. And those case managers deal with their issues with the VA, getting them their support, figuring out how to acquire the benefits that some have earned and are not sure how to, how to obtain. So we bridge that gap and give them the confidence to then pursue those, those benefits on their own.
Okay. I appreciate that overview. That's a very detailed explanation, sheds a lot of light on what, you know, these housing, comfort houses look like, what the apartment building looks like. Clearly, you've put a lot of thought and detail into your establishments, how you operate for the veterans, what you're providing them, and what that looks like. You know, as far as the use goes of providing this veteran service and this veteran housing, you know, this is clearly very well thought out, very detailed, very well, well-planned. I don't take issue with that, fully support the veterans. What disappoints me is that you're able to take that level of detail when it comes to laying out your building's structure and services, but yet have not gone beyond that to look at a level of any detail and how you could integrate it into the community and into, you know, the cityscape around it and the various infrastructure that exists currently within, within this property space. When I look at a land development plan, I like to look and see how this plan is fitting into the greater community, the greater infrastructure, how it's tying into things. And what's been frustrating and disappointing for me is just seeing that some very important infrastructure pieces are not being properly integrated into this existing, the proposed development.
I mean, I can appreciate that, but I can assure you that with the help of our civil engineer and our understanding of the lay of the land, and most importantly, like Linda mentioned before, are focused on protecting the, the veteran that's gonna live in this community.
Sure.
That is our focus. So we've, we've gone back and forth on trying to figure out how to balance that. And one thing that we've, we've come to realize is that we cannot compromise putting any, any individual that's in, within our villages in contact with people that we can't control. Like I previously said, there's no control on anybody that comes over that bridge. There's no control on anybody that walks on, along that, the trail. I'm not taking issue with people who responsibly ride their bikes, and there are ways, because they're doing it now, to get around this area and continue their trek throughout the rest of the trail. But that is something that we've come to the conclusion that we cannot compromise. Our perimeter, not to mention that it's on private property, that we're trying to figure out, and even what we're accommodating on the road is on private property. So we've come to that conclusion to allow access across that road. If you're on a bike, certainly run right through the, through that road and continue along that road out to, to the remainder of the, the roads in town, which everybody rides the bikes on, on roads. Not everybody rides a bike on a trail. And there are trails where you go off-road and you come back on trail. So the circuit is there. There is, there is a, a, a way to tie that in that it's not through this property.
Yeah, I respectfully disagree with that. Have you had conversations with the Veterans Outreach of Pennsylvania as to how to tie together the Green Belt and their portion of the land that they have owned and developed and this portion of the land?
Well, I mean, I'll allow Tom to speak relative to their position with, with the access around their property. And quite frankly, I'm sure that there are concerns that he has with, with accessibility to his property, similar to ours. We just happen to be sitting in front of you with a project that we're trying to resolve, which quite frankly helps the community in many ways, other than just figuring out how this road is gonna tie into an existing trail.
Hello, my name's Tom Zimmerman, six-five-two-six Plowman Ridge, Harrisburg one-seven-one-one-two. I am the co-founder and chairman of Veterans Outreach of Pennsylvania. First of all, thank you for your time. We are at the southernmost five acres of land. It is a private land. One thing I'd want to kind of address here is that the veterans that we're dealing with are the ones that are homeless and are at risk. These are not people who interact with regular people. And part of the mission is to create this environment as Tunnel to Towers, which we support, can make it better for people who served or willing to sacrifice their life for our freedom. But part of that process is to get them healthy. As we continue, and as you guys know, we've been in front of you guys before, it took us four and a half years to raise the money. We did it. We thank Jeffrey, we thank you for dividing the land to get us to where we're going. But even during the construction process, where we had gates up for the protection and because big equipment down there, there were people riding their bikes through the construction. Even though the gates are still up now, because the construction, hopefully, will start with Tunnel to Towers, there were people carrying their bikes, and there are signs that say, "Private property, do not enter." And I just stopped three ladies in their eighties riding their bike who went through our property, and it's a detriment to our veterans and who we're trying to care for. So we cannot control, and you guys can't control, and the Green Belt can't control, who uses that piece of property. So it's very important to help our veterans, the ones that have really been struggling, to give them the pride and dignity of their own private space as we're doing this healing. And the goal is for them to graduate and move back into society and live a life of dignity and pride. When you have the general public, and it is private land, I don't think that there's a permanent easement that the Green Belt has. It has been allowed to use this piece of property for twenty-five years or however long it's been by the generosity of a private owner living in Harrisburg. She could say, "It's over, done. You don't have the right to do it." I think working on a solution that works for everybody is the best. But more importantly than anything is our veterans. And that's what I think that we need to consider here, is that we are trying to make a difference. And by bringing in organizations like us, we're gonna free up affordable housing in other areas of the city, which is very, very lacking and overwhelming right now. So if I was a city, I would be welcoming organizations to help alleviate that problem. Thank you.
I'm just gonna say one more thing. It's beyond me that since the inception of these projects and we started discussion on them, there has been complete lack since of a coordinated effort when we have instructed multiple times in multiple meetings to work with the Green Belt Association to establish either an easement, a right-of-way, a coordinated pathway revising its location. And we have made that, requested that multiple times. I mean, when we've reviewed past developments and plans, and it's been a condition, and it's beyond me why nobody sees the value in a piece of infrastructure that is important, not just to the city of Harrisburg, but to the greater Dolphin community.
I know I came in a little hot before, because I was upset. We have had the conversations. We are trying, we're trying to work with the Green Belt Association. We have had multiple false statements made about our efforts. Part of the reason that I'm here as the vice president of the corporation, or the foundation, is to try to address those issues, those falsehoods that have been stated. We are working in good faith. We have had meetings. The problem is, what we have said is okay with us. You may traverse our private property on the eastern border. You can do it. But that's not the answer that the association wants. And I'm sorry, but that's the answer we can give. And to address the issue that Mr. Knight, in all good faith, made about put up hedgerows, put up a wall, I don't understand why it's okay to block our veterans' view of the beautiful Susquehanna River to allow that trail. On the other side, on the eastern portion, there's a natural grade, right? So they can, there's a separation that's natural. It doesn't interfere, the veterans won't see them. But on the water side, we're being told either let our, let the trail continue through their front... through their front yard so that they're always seeing people through the summer. I don't know if it's used in the winter. You guys can tell me. But always have people going through that property that we, we can't control. It's not about the, the good members of the Green Belt Association, but not everybody that's, that's gonna use that op- now-open road, that trail, is a member of the association. Not all of the people that are gonna take that path are gonna be good, honest people. Not all of those people are gonna walk past and go and, and say, "These are our nation's heroes that we're taking care of." There are some people that will do bad things. We're just trying to mitigate that. You can utilize the eastern border of the property. You can utilize that piece. We don't have any control over what the general authority does. Our engineers are telling us we can't do the great thing on the north part of our property. And is the Green Belt Association gonna buy that strip or do we have to subdivide that? I don't know how all of that works either. But you're asking us to make massive changes that may not even be possible. When we're saying, "You can use that order," and then let's work with the rest of the community to figure out how to get to that point. We can only control our piece. But we have to secure, we have to protect our veterans from the element that may not just want to enjoy the beauty of the Susquehanna and the trail.
Uh, no other questions at this time.
So, excuse me. So I just have a statement to make. Um, the city has an explicit objective to complete the Green Belt. I know that that's neither here nor there for your particular project, but that's in our comp plan. And while it is obviously needless to say, you know, with great intention to help the veterans and that is admirable, the city, you know, cannot sacrifice the Green Belt as part of that process because once that link is severed, it's gone. And as things currently are s- are proposed, it's counterproductive to what the city's ultimate objective is, which is to complete the Green Belt. Where, you know, I can't speak for anybody else on the commission. I can only speak for myself. I don't have any problem with the project as a whole, but we have to find some type of way to balance this out. I don't know if that's along the riverfront. I don't know if it's along the east into the north, but as it currently is proposed, it, it does not look like it is sufficient from a safety standpoint because as Jeffrey indicated earlier, that then dumps trailers out into the parking lot. And then we have the issue as has already been described in various other meetings about Sycamore. So that's my statement.
My only question is gonna be a, a very practical question that I think, uh, was already, uh, covered by Commissioner Jordan, but do, um, do you agree with or at least acknowledge that the compromise solution along the eastern, uh, part of the parcel goes into an active parking lot? And wh- where it leaves the property?
It connects to a road or a path through that lot that's defined as an extension of the road to connect our road. So it's not just a parking lot. It is a thoroughfare through that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I don't have any.
This is gonna be, uh, a long night. Um, I'm gonna go through the public. And, um, if you do speak, I'm gonna, uh, have you, have you speak for probably no longer than two, three minutes, 'cause I, it will go on forever we do that. And I don't want someone speaking back. There, you'll get your chance. You know, you'll get your chance. So I'll start to my left, you, or against the project. State your name and address.
Just make sure it picks up on the camera, because they do record.
Be, before I get into my both statements, I just knew this was a go. I mean, I just couldn't imagine what would stop these homes from coming in. And I'm gonna tell you the truth, I, just by listening, it's very frustrating. I, I've been in the military twenty-six years. And we get together and we work things out. I'm not gonna minimize Green Belt or anything else. But when it comes to those girls and guys, you have to remember this. Now, I'm gonna just, I looked at a couple of things. Uh, support the, so, uh, Tunnel to Towers, found out by a great group of people, and we sat down, not even lea- deal with the bullet statements. When we look at need assessment and we look at our veterans for folks in, there's a need assessment, the, the American Legion and the VFW, we are on the front lines of this. We are on the front lines when they come to our door. And, and, and as hard as it may be to come to that door and ask for food, we have packages together, we do re-checks, and the hardest thing for me to tell them is where to direct them other than the Bethesda mission. We have young men and women that have been in the theater and seen some of the most horrific things in their lives and come back home and tell them to get over it. Just imagine being part of something so big, whether it've been Afghanistan or Vietnam or, or Iraq, being part of something so big and come back home and be relegated to, "Ah, he'll be all right, she'll be all right." Or just to think about veterans that come back home and they were the breadwinners for their family. And now they're waiting on the VA, and you know how slow the VA can be? And their mother and their, and the parents and the children are looking at their breadwinner. And he's looking back at them. He's trying to get his life together, trying to maintain himself. And everything that he looks at, where he used to be, the breadwinner, and he's fighting. Then the thought comes to his mind, maybe, maybe they don't need me. Maybe they don't need me. And then they go up on the third floor in the corner of the house with blood that rains out. When we sit here, County Commander, Brother Jackson, we are definitely on the front line of this. I just, when I saw it, I thought that was the greatest thing in the world, to be able to house these, these young men and women. And like the one man said, there are, we're a group of people that have been together, whether different conflicts or not. It's hard for me to break bread with somebody that don't know where we've been. You don't even know the smells that trigger my mind, but to be able to come into the American Legion and VFW and find someone that has similar things like you and they start talking and they're releasing these things. And then they find a home. But I just implore all you folks in here, until you walk that walk or talk that talk, to be in the shoes of them young men and women that will never forget what they saw and should be able to come home to open arms. I don't know the ins and outs, but I think it's a dynamic program. And whatever the issues and causes are, we need to get over that. We definitely do, because they deserve that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I take the mic over?
No, 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 no. Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
I didn't mean like, take it over.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Caleb Jackson and I live at twenty-seven thirty-seven North Second Street, which is close to the house we discussed earlier. And, uh, I've been in Harrisburg, uh, ninety-four years. I'm also a veteran and a member of the American Legion Post, seven thirty-three. And I hear this from both sides. In fact, I remember driving cars on the beltway. You know that? It was no, you know, we drove cars on the city beltway. And I also see, uh, the people on the other side. Uh, Shy Poke is interested. By the way, Shy Poke, we have an article next, uh, February on Black Shy Poke that was destroyed nineteen thirty-six, never rebuilt. You know about that? Okay. But Diane McCormick's gonna do that. And I realize you have this great decision, but as a veteran, veterans need, it seems like, to me, the older veterans like me don't need as much help as some of the ones in the forties and fifties. My, this is like the, the ones from Afghanistan and Vietnam, of Korea, but not the, but some of the later ones need more help than the other ones. I think this community would be a great idea because it's not just homes and housing, but it's community. He mentions that somebody would be on board to, uh, advise, uh, veterans of all their, their rights and whatnot, as an a- as an advocacy, more or less. So I urge you to come to a compromise on this. Somebody will lose a little bit, somebody will gain. But I think you should pass this and, and do this for the veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kenton Stanbaugh. I'm the Dauphin County Commander of the American Legion. I represent the fourteen posts in Dauphin County. Uh, you asked where the veterans were. Well, over eight thousand of them are standing right here. Harrisburg, where I was born and raised, has always been a military city. It's a very wonderful military city. I don't need to remind you of the history going all the way back to the Revolutionary War and Harris's Ferry and the Civil War certainly of Camp Edison, uh, Camp Curtain. Harrisburg was the biggest basic training site during the Civil War for the Union sites. Over three hundred thousand Civil War veterans were trained up here on the hill, Camp Curtain. World War I, which my grandfather served in, World War II, uh, which my mother and father were both in the Navy. Um, my mother was stationed here in Harrisburg during World War II. That's how she met my father. I'm a retired attack helicopter pilot, born and raised out on Nineteenth and Derry. The Green Belt from, uh, Twenty-Ninth Street, from Paxstang, all the way out to Klein Village, that was my, my playground growing up. I appreciate that green space. So, um, it's my honor to be personal friends with Tom. And when Tom said he was building VOPA, um, I knew he was gonna get it done. Tunnel to Towers has a history of getting it done. You'll recognize the Tunnel to Towers veterans. They're, they're the ones without legs, arms. They have caretakers because they had traumatic brain injuries. You know, I'm, I'm one of the lucky ones. I came home and I, I dedicated my life to serving the veterans here in, in Dauphin County. I'm, I'm the biggest donator that you probably never heard of. Uh, over five hundred thousand dollars from my organization to any, any nonprofit that's veterans-oriented. And that's just my own post out in Linglestown, which I've had the pleasure to lead. Uh, we're very successful. Those of us that are, have been in business, I was the vice president for Pency Supply. I understand that everything south of, of, uh, Paxstang Street is Phil, you know, it's. So there's, there's that, there's things we have to adapt and overcome. That's a military statement, adapt and overcome. Do not let this, this difference over the Green Belt stop this program. We are a, a military city that has always welcomed us home from the homeland, uh, which you know from Civil War days. That's how they got their start with the, with the orphans and wives. And, you know, I loved when I came in here tonight, that all of them were, had veterans organizations and the, and the homeless and the, the children, you know? Uh, they were all nonprofit. This is a great town. Congratulations and thanks for your leadership in this town, folks. It's hard to lead and goes, you got decisions to make like this. But don't, don't let, I'll echo my brother's statement. Don't let this lack of the ability to compromise stop this needed, um, project. It's, it's affordable housing for my brothers and sisters. The Lebanon, Dauphin and Cumberland County make up our nineteenth district to the American Legion. It's the largest in Pennsylvania. We are the largest with the number of veterans in Pennsylvania. And this is a great project. This is a great city. I've raised my family here. I'm from here. I've lived all my life here, except for uh, military, uh, my service. So I'll just end there. The way I'm thinking of it, and I'll just speak my mind, this is property, this is private property down here, I believe. This is accessed through it. And you can work with PennDOT and the, you know, and the, and the county commissioners to get something built that's safe there for however many feet that is. I can't see it, but we're asking for, there, the, the Tunnel to Towers group is asking for consideration of that. I don't think it sounds unreasonable. And it's not a real pretty green space. I understand that. It's, it's gonna be a, a sidewalk and that kind of thing, but the, the amount of veterans that this will help is worth a couple hundred feet of sidewalk, I think. So thank you.
I'll go to the center. Anyone who are against the project?
Bruce Weest with, uh, Pyramid Construction Services. We served as the, uh, builder for the Veterans Outreach Project. And I can really just speak to going through the construction process. We fenced off our areas of construction, signed them, put danger, "Do not enter", um, trying to keep people out for their own safety. We have lots of equipment going on. But repeatedly, we, fences were cut, locks were cut. People came walking onto the site during construction, riding their bikes through during construction. So it was, it was very difficult for us to even keep people off while we were building it there, while they were trying to continue to use the trail and expected to be able to still use the trail. Numerous times, people would come through and, "Oh, we're, we're still allowed to use the trail." No, it's shut down for construction. They would continue to, to move on and, and not abide by the, the warnings that were out there.
Anyone else from the center?
I am John Hickey. I am at Thirty-nine oh-one Pamay Drive in Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania, one, seven, oh, five, oh. I'm also on the Board of Veterans Outreach and, uh, actually, I'm the person that asked Tunnel to Towers to come be our Phase Two. So when we got people well enough to move on from our, um, therapeutic community into a more transitional, even permanent housing space that we would have that, and I introduced them to Peggy. Um, and Peggy has been good enough to try and make this safe space in the south part of Harrisburg for people who are experiencing homelessness. Um, and I just wanna say, you know, it's disappointing to me, some of the misrepresentations that have been made recently. I've had people from the Green Belt say that they had agreement from Tunnel to Towers to the path that's being proposed, and we're clearing here, there's not agreement. I've had the people from Eden Village say that they have not agreed to let this run down their riverfront to the edge of their property. They said they would continue to work. So some of the stuff that has happened recently has really caused Tunnel to Towers to have to issue a press statement about this that's generated some of the buzz around today. And for me, as a veteran, and I was, I'm blessed. I am, you know, I have eighteen different kinds of privilege and one of them is, when I was in the Navy, there was other countries warring with each other and we were next door. We were not at war. Um, and you paid for my college, so thanks for that. Um, you know, I was blessed to get that scholarship. I was blessed to be in the Navy when I was. And I'm trying to give back by this service, um, to VOPA and to Tunnel to Towers. It is disappointing for me to hear people say that they think that what is a green space and a, a walking trail, and I've used it, I've, I've run five Ks on it, I've done things there. The idea that people who, while they were unhoused, people walked by them, looked at them, stepped over them and ignored them. We've now given them a home, but we're gonna tell them that people get to continue to walk by them, even if they're ignoring them. That's just not right. And what has been proposed, um, is offensive to me that the idea that we're gonna say, because the county has said no, we're not gonna try the county to give us the bottom half of that parking lot to get us eight feet to run across the parking lot. We're instead gonna try and take land from a private citizen or force through the approval process, the new private owner, to donate the land to the Green Belt Association without regard to what the liability concerns are going forward and whatnot. Um, like I said, I just, I, I came up to speak in support of Tunnel to Towers, this project, what we're trying to do for the veteran community. I understand it's not ideal if you go across the north and down the road. Even that has liability concerns that are gonna need to be Even that has liability concerns that are going to need to be worked out because that road is going to be jointly managed by all three of the entities there. And I would also point out that even the current detour, which runs over Sycamore Street to Cameron, down to Shannoy and back onto the Green Belt, that is a designated bike trail. There's a sign that says J1 National Pennsylvania Bike Trail right on that road. So it's not inconceivable that bikes would go there. You do need to do some work. We need to do something to the sidewalk. You need to cut back the overgrowth on Sycamore Street, but even that does allow the Green Belt to be contiguous. It just isn't as pretty as the riverfront.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the center? Peggy, I'm sorry, I didn't want to put you on the spot, but since you're the owner, I've known you for a while.
My name is Peggy Grove. I live at 2920 Parkside Lane. My office address is 510 North 3rd Street in Harrisburg. I have lived in Harrisburg since, off and on, since 1989, and the first time I drove down, I didn't drive. Yes, I was driving. Down Front Street of Harrisburg, I fell in love with this city, and that was in 1963. I'm 81 years old. My son and I are in the process of selling our business. We are down to one property, and there's a lot of urban myths that I have absorbed in the last year, even before that, but I never spoke up, and it was my fault for not speaking up and putting a stop to some of this at the very beginning. First of all, Green Belt people, persons sent by their board or whatever, going way back, 28 years, have always come to me and said, we want an easement, that they always wanted the Front Street property. That's the prime property of the entire tract. I donated the land in South Harrisburg to help the VOPA project go into fruition. I also called the governor because the RPAC grant was not going through, and I got him 10 days before he left office to, I found it on Desk 17, to make sure that that project would occur. Rotarians, we always met at the Hilton, it's the Harrisburg Rotarian Club, and Rotarians have made all of this happen, put together. Ellen Brown, who is not here tonight, came to me probably seven years ago and said, she described the VOPA project and that they needed land. And I said, let's get in the car, and I drove her down to show her the property. The last deal that we had that was in writing was when Governor Rendell was in office, and we had a group that came to us, in fact, right from central Pennsylvania, who wanted to do a riverboat gambling site down there, plus build a huge, what I thought was a monstrosity of a, like a hotel and casino, but they couldn't have the casino in on the land. At that time, I lived in Shypoke. I lived in, and I don't know that you know that.
No, I didn't know that.
Okay. I lived in Shypoke. I was on city council when Ollie Rosenberg died. Ollie never owned this land. Alex Grass owned it under various sundry other entities, and never did the city have ownership of any of this land or rights to any of this land. It is private land. It has been private land for, ever since the Phoenix Steel was there. And I'm not going to go into detail here, but I will put something in the paper that will detail all the history, and I'm just in the process of researching who owned what and what, under what names, et cetera. I have an appraiser that is handicapped that I have hired in my office to help us close out the balance of the business. Speaking of which, my goal is to end this business at the end of this year. I have provided liability insurance at an expense covering VOPA, not VOPA, but Green Belt, et cetera, and the public for all of these years, for 28 years, at great expense. And I asked Green Belt many times, do you have any liability insurance? And the answer was always no, and they weren't willing to get any. I still allowed them to use the property. I had, when I was on city council, I asked the policemen that would patrol our area, that's when I lived in Shypoke, to go down and just spot, you know, use the spotlight just to make sure there wasn't anything going on in South Harrisburg. And naive me, I thought, when we had a camper there, I thought there were campers, and probably 50% of them were, but some of them were homeless. They left that site within 24 hours of arriving. I never had a homeless encampment down there, ever, because we took care of that property. I never had dumping because I had two maintenance men who took care of the Old Cam Building, which is on Cameron Street. They checked that out at 6:00 AM every morning and at 2:00 in the afternoon before they started and at the end of their day, so that I had that monitored, even though I didn't have a deal on it or anything. This is private land that I personally have taken care of. Ollie died in 1996, and the building, the PennDOT building, he and Alex Grass and Bill Tideman and several other, and Buzz Rosenberg, who was not related to Ollie, contrary to urban legend, et cetera, there were more people involved, that were the people who were the ownership. And unfortunately, we ended up with three widows when it came time to sell that property to, along with the building, and it was only part of the property. I think, Michael, can you come up here, please, with numbers? This is my son, Michael Grove, and he can tell you where he lives. And he's been in business with me for 30 years.
Michael Grove, I live at 510 North 3rd Street in Harrisburg.
And tell them how many acres were first sold to Green Belt.
The initial site was 12 and a half acres, and then they sold the six and a half acres for the parking lot, and then the remaining 20 were to be redeveloped.
Okay. And like, don't leave. He's my numbers person, and I'm 81. I'm allowed to forget, and I just got over COVID, and I spent the summer in bed with eight different infections because I was on casqually, and I am done with chemo. I've been on chemo for 28 years, 28 years that I have fought, and now I have another fight? This is ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. As you've heard from the veterans and from other people sitting here, this project is a great project. Green Belt is the one being obstreperous. I hate to say this, and I have supported Green Belt for the last 28 years, but to require us to give up frontal property, which is the highest and best value of any property, is the amount on the river. Look at the values of all the mansions along Front Street in the Harrisburg area. Those properties are worth more and evaluated more or estimated value more because they're on the river. If I sell this property to someone, that's going to be the coveted part of that property. We have given the Green Belt, this is what the project has agreed to, and I'm going to just mention Eden Village is affordable housing. That's the third portion that connects the other two. And Eden Village, if any of you know anything about the Bridge to Hope project that's on the hill, it's patterned on the same way. It's $300 a month, everything's included, and they give them workforce development, teach them how to save money so that they can go back into a rental that is a regular rental. Hopefully, there'll be more affordable housing that they won't have to go into a landlord, absentee landlord's housing, which is substandard, and I fought against. I was served on city council for eight years, and I was on council at the beginning of this. And I'm just going to say one other thing. The urban legend that the Green Chair Trust had anything to do with anything green that's public is ridiculous. In 1982, my husband and I finalized our divorce, and Christmas time, I bought two chairs, two green chairs from Palm Royce. That's where the name of Green Chair Trust came from. Had nothing to do with the Green Belt, had nothing to do with any other project. And it became a joke with the family because the kids hid the chairs when they were delivered, and it was like quarter to six on Christmas Eve. Long story short, those chairs have followed, and they're still in my living room. And at one point, I told both of my boys that there would be a video in them, and that's where anything having to do with my estate would be, and that if they didn't have that chair in their house, that they wouldn't get anything. So they were going to have to live with those chairs for a very long time. So unfortunately, my oldest son died six years ago, may he live in blessed memory, from brain cancer. So he has to take two chairs now. And that's a funny story to end note on, but I will tell you, there's at least 20 urban myths out there about me, as long as I'm public. I never had anything to do with Ollie's bargain outlet. Ollie built the building, that the second building that they were in on the East Shore, that is what we had to settle as part of the estate. So those people who think I have all this money because there's 500 Ollie stores, et cetera, has nothing to do with that. This young man and I worked our butts off, and I hope butts is okay. I could say something else, which is what I'd like to say, but tukus, I'll use tukus, that's better. Anyway, we worked ourselves to the bone because 80% of the properties that Ollie left us, Mia's remainder woman, had no roofs. Now, not that they were completely bare roofs, but they didn't have integral roofs. He didn't believe in roofs. That was not part of his belief system. And I know that sounds funny, but it isn't, because without having the roof fixed, you couldn't get a vanilla box to sell it to anybody as a tenant or to sell the property itself. We had properties in, how many properties did we start with?
35.
35, in four different states. And then if you include the condo in Florida, which was worth diminished, other than the Old Cam Building, which had been built in 1988, 88, 89, when we started it, 88, and his holdings in the PennDOT Building, which only had three decks, this was the winter from hell. This is when he died, the bridge, the Walnut Street Bridge came down. That was the winter that Shypoke lost six houses, three, six to fires, three and three, because the fire trucks could not get in to take care of them. And everybody was out of Shypoke. I was on city council at the time, and I got the utilities, which I know this is unheard of, I got the utilities to work together with the Shypoke residents so that they could get back in in an orderly fashion. So don't tell me that I haven't had this citizens of the city of Harrisburg in my heart. I had, my very first business here was a private proprietary school for students that, for women, it wasn't primarily for women, but because of the nature and the time, the kinds of programs that I offered were medical assistance and those kinds of programs. They attracted more women than men, and I think we only had like two male students there while I owned the business. And first two floors were panted like this, third floor had 28 garbage cans on it with wheels. I thought, why in the world would I have garbage cans? It's because it rained through the third and fourth floor, so they had to move the garbage cans. Another roof that Ollie didn't believe in. So anyway, Ollie was a wonderful man. He believed in Zadokah, which is the highest and best value of the eight rules of charity coming from the Old Testament, and which is to help a person gain an education, start a business so that they can make themselves whole first, then take care of their family, and then give back to the community. Whenever I give a scholarship, I ask any of my students to do those same things, and I have people that I have helped for the last 30 years because I had help. I was homeless or nearly homeless as a child, and we built our house out of demolished houses. Rags and papers were what we insulated with. And I will tell you, I understand not having something to eat. My mother was mentally ill. She would forget to feed us. So don't tell me I was born with a silver spoon in my mouth. We worked hard to make sure that I can give back things like I'm trying to do for the city of Harrisburg. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you.
You get to hold it.
Is there anyone else in the center? Not, I'll go to my right.
Yep, Edjirak, 1521 North 2nd Street, Apartment 1, Zip Code 17102. So I think there is a compromise, but I want to, just if I may, speak to the applicant a little bit about, again, the Green Belt, and I think some of the logic that I believe you don't appreciate of how nice the Green Belt is. So I don't know if you've driven the whole thing, but one compromise that was suggested, you guys need to get on bikes as a group and go ride on the Green Belt, because like if you start up on the governor's mansion, you know, there's been tons of government investment, right? I don't know, three, four years ago, the city spent hundreds of thousands of dollars and repaved the lower deck down by the river, right? Took all summer, right? And the way the Green Belt, and I'm just a citizen, this is just stuff I've read in the paper, the way the Green Belt works, they say, hey, we got this much done, then they go back to the next grant, and they say, well, now we're one mile, now we're two miles uninterrupted off the street. And, you know, I live in the city. The city is full of streets, but what we're not full of is off-street, you know, these trails, see? And unfortunately, where you are talking about doing your change or this, you know, not keeping the path, whatever you want to call it, that's like right in the core of, you know, you've now been off the road for, let's say, from the governor's mansion, 10, 15 minutes, and now suddenly it's like, oh, I got to go this way out into a traffic zone, you know, or into a parking lot. It's very, very disruptive, or it just takes you back to the shock that you're living in the city, you see? And so I think that logic of, oh, you're on a path, you just got to get on a sidewalk and go through a parking lot, I wouldn't discount how troubling that really is when you're right like in the middle, because once you get past that PennDOT place and then you go back over this way, then you get up to the Civil War Museum, you know what I mean? You get all the way around, and there are places where there's like maybe 20 feet, you got to cross the road, and those are then, you know, scary. But the whole goal, the whole game of the Green Belt is to get a full circle, which the gentleman said they're trying to complete it, and they've been at it for 25 years. So unfortunately, the area that you're, you know, just making this little detour, and I'm not saying someone, it couldn't be redone, but I just think to come back to the city who's made all this investments and things and say, well, now we got to go back to the county, or we got to go do something else, or we got to do this, it's really impactful. And that's, I think, the challenge. I still think, I don't know what these drawings are or where exactly, but I don't know, I hope you can compromise some, because I think maybe get an alternative design or something, I'm not sure, but I, there's so many players, it seems like would set us back 10 years, you know? To be honest with you, the ways government works and it's county government, and if the county's saying they're not doing it, I don't know, that's my concern. So, all right, you get my point. Thank you very much.
Why would I give up my time property? This is land change.
And if I may, address the issue on that, it seems to me that the Green Belt or someone made a big legal error and never got the easement in place. Because as a taxpayer, they've been telling grants for years saying, we've got an uninterrupted deal. And it sounds like they didn't have an uninterrupted deal.
Why would I give up my time property? This is land change.
No. No, I just.
I didn't want you to go there.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right. But I just want to address, I'm just saying, as a citizen, people have been saying.
You heard you say we know what you.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Is there anyone else on the left?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Rebecca Lee Partt, 609 showers street. So I appreciate all the additional questions that came from tonight. And I think that that was of value to have those discussions. I hope that those discussions can be brought to Shypoke. I did reach out to Jane Whitaker, who is the president, the current president of the Shypoke Neighborhood Association. She got back to me. She stated via a text, happy to show folks, that she did respond to that email and she received no response in return. And that, yes, we are interested in having a community meeting. And Peggy, we would love to talk with you, you know, especially as a former neighbor. I think many things can be true at the same time, right? We can want to help veterans, but also have a dire need in Shypoke to have some real and serious and hard discussions about the current nature of what is happening and how best we move forward. I don't think that that precludes helping veterans. It just may need to be more open to also helping other folks too. When I hear discussions about how it's unsafe for other individuals to come into contact with the veterans, I do understand, I think, what they're trying to say. Maybe that could be better suited for further discussion, you know, in the neighborhood. But, you know, I also think as a neighbor, that's a little offensive to me and maybe that's why we need to have some broader discussions. Because I am a neighbor and we should want to be partners as neighbors. And so when we're proposing a project where we're talking about keeping folks out, and I'm the folk that you're talking about keeping out, and simultaneously, I'm dealing with issues where, like I said, I can't even walk my baby anymore down towards the Green Belt or into the city, you know? Yeah, we need to have some real, honest, hard conversations. And hopefully, they're good conversations where everyone can feel like they win in the end. All I'm imploring this board to do is to consider giving us the opportunity to have the important dialogue that needs to happen. And I hope that it's a solution for everyone. And we, yes, we can help veterans. Like I said, we've passed off on VOPA. We want to try to do, you know, see good, come true. I don't think our goals are all that different. We just need to be cognizant of how we get there and the dialogue that needs to take place. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on my right?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm Doug Hill. And I live at 709 Green Street here in Harrisburg. And I'm the president of the Capital Area Green Belt Association. With your permission, we have a couple of handouts for you, if we can distribute those. We, I apologize, we weren't expecting quite this many tonight. We have, I think, 20 copies. We'll spread them as far as we can. But anybody who doesn't get one, see me afterward and I'll be sure you get a copy. And not to hold things up, I'll just, I'll just speak while they're doing that. I'm not sure where to begin and forgive me if I can't condense this in two minutes. But at the outset, I have to say, first and foremost, we do support the Tunnel to Towers project. As we supported the VOPA project and as we expressed at the July meeting, we will be supporting the Eden project when it comes before you. We recognize the distinct communities that they serve. We recognize the need for these projects here in the city. We think it is wonderfully unique, the different approaches each of these developments takes to serving their particular populations. And so anything that we say tonight, we don't want to be construed to oppose the project. In fact, we support it. And we don't want it to be taken as an excuse to delay the project or its consideration by this body and by the council. That said, we have been in discussions. It's been, I will call it a mix. We started with initial in-person discussions with Mr. Grossman. It shifted at one point where we had a direct conversation with Matt Mahoney, who is the executive vice president for Tunnel to Towers. It was a Zoom call. That's the origin of the comment about the Tunnel to Towers being supportive of the relocation of the Green Belt in this location. In that call, where we were joined by someone who is on the board of the National 9/11 Trail Group, he indicated, which, by the way, is part of the Green Belt through this area. He indicated that he would be enthusiastic to support the trail through the property. And I think his words were, if I had to decrease the footprint of the project, I'd do it to help accommodate. That isn't necessary, but that's really the genesis of where some of those comments came from. Since then though, it's been a little bit more difficult because it's kind of been a discussion by proxy. And so the person that I referred to relative to the National 9/11 Trail has been kind of intermediary with the New York office. We've been doing some outreach locally, but the bottom line is, no, we've not had an opportunity for all of us to sit down face to face and have some conversation with finality. So reactions that we furnished along the way were given to someone who passed it on to someone who passed it on to someone else. We didn't know the final disposition until Bruce was in touch with me a couple of days ago about the offer of the sidewalk on the east side of the property. Our interest is in making sure you understand a couple of things. First, the Green Belt, the Capital Area Green Belt Association does not own or control any part of the trail. The entirety of the trail is in public domain with the exception of this private property and two other properties in South Harrisburg. All the rest is either directly owned by the city or by one of our municipal partners or if it's on private property, there's an easement recorded in favor of the municipality where it's located. Our only role is to develop, maintain, preserve, and promote the use of the trail. And to do that, we're a 501(c)(3), it is an all-volunteer group. And we've been doing that for quite a few years now. And we've been, I think, proven successful. We off, we lay off about $2 million a year in what the municipalities would otherwise have to put up for improvements and for maintenance. We have generated over $20 million over the years in improvements to the trail. We have some major projects going on right now, including a resurfacing of the Paxton Parkway, among other projects. So we have a demonstrated track record of support of the trail, even though we don't actually control it. To the point of the insurance, thank you for insuring. Because we have no control of the trail, because we have no equitable ownership, we can't take insurance for it. There are other solutions to that, but that's a conversation for the side and for another time. And I, and by the way, I was remiss at the beginning for not thanking you, Peggy, for the allowance for the use of the trail for the last 30 years. We do concur, and it's perfectly accurate, that that is private property. We have one signed document, but that is no more than a permission. It is not rise to the level of an easement or a right of way. And so it is by permission. In exchange, we have done considerable work in that area. The railroad bridge that we rely on, we did a full engineering inspection back in the early 90s. Based on that inspection, we raised the money, we redecked the entirety of the bridge. We actually revisited that two years ago, did a minor inspection and did some more improvements to the decking. And then in the subject property, we did clearing, we did, moved about 54, 55,000 cubic yards of waste material out of the area, mulch and so on, and so other improvements. So we tried to act as good stewards in exchange for the permission that we were granted to use that area. I also need to point out that we have tried to act as good stewards as these projects, and I'm using the plural purposely, have come forward. So if you remember a couple of years ago when VOPA was in front of you, we agreed that we supported. At that time, the Green Belt did extend through the area that's now part of VOPA. We ceded that. We said we will relinquish any interest to that. And by the way, I distinctly apologize for the people who don't get it and for the people who have bad manners, who through the construction and even continuing till last week, and Tom and I had this discussion, continue to violate that. And we've been trying to work with them to do additional signage posting, Dolphin County General Authority, to do additional signage posting there and so on. Because we do share that concern and it's not right. But to the point, we have tried to be good stewards then and do all of our due diligence going forward. So as soon as we were informed that the fences were going up for the construction, we started work with the city on finding a suitable as possible detour. We did the postings for the detour. We worked with the city media office to inform the public that the detour is going in place. Here's where it's to be used. We've been doing our social media posts, including reminders, and working with the city to make sure as best we can that people respect the property, the VOPA property, as well as the construction site. In addition to that, we recognized that this project was going to land squarely on top of the trail as it goes, the remainder that went through that area. And I did bring along a chart. I don't want to belabor your time. I can show you if you want the specific alternate routes that we've considered and tried to see if they are workable. But in briefest form, the one is the one that's proposed here, that we take the sidewalk on the east side and then extend in through the Dolphin County General Authority property along the roadway. It can't continue on that side of the road because when you get to the building on the north side, there is a drop-off point, there are two driveways. And so there's no way to put a pathway or sidewalk on that side. So you have to cross over and then have a second crosswalk to get back to the trail. The problem that the authority has identified, and we have talked to them about this, is that there is no place to put that crosswalk that has appropriate site distances because of the curve, if you're familiar with it, coming this direction and because of the slope of the bridge on Sycamore coming the other direction. So that makes that alternative significantly difficult. Now, we were smart enough this time not to ask the Dolphin County General Authority for a full determination. Because the last time we did that was when we had the discussion on using the east sidewalk and then going across the county parking lot. And that, we got a hard no because that went in front of the board. The reason it got a hard no is because it would, to engineer it properly for ADA compliance, it would take away 43 parking spaces. And Dolphin County was afraid of what that would do with their lease arrangement with PennDOT. So that was where that went. So we were smart enough, we didn't give us a decision on this, but that's the general, we did follow up with them, that's the general initial determination we had from them on that alternate. The other alternate is to come across Front Street right before you get to PennDOT and then just follow up where we're detouring now. And that's to go over Sycamore Street. And then instead of going the whole way to Cameron, cross over the street and then find a way through two private properties to connect with the city-owned property over on the other side. Again, it'd probably be easier for me to show you on the chart if you want me to. Okay. So, we're good, we're good. All right, so here's the Tunnel to Towers property. Here is the traditional route of the trail. And this is the part that's lost by the footprint of the Tunnel to Towers property. This little stub over here is the potential future site of the Eden Village property. And then this is the railroad bridge, of course, the remainder of the trail over on the side. This is the PennDOT Service Center. This is the employee lot, the boundary line that I was just speaking of, where the initial proposal is to come on this side of the boundary line and then connect right here to the sidewalk. And this is what I say we got the hard turn down. The alternative as proposed, we take the sidewalk. Would take the sidewalk out along here and then back up or back over to the trail right here. And the hard part is finding where to provide a crosswalk in here or in here that gives adequate site distance. So that's a rather significant safety and engineering challenge. The county, for its part, doesn't want a crosswalk anywhere in its property that might be unsafe for their understandable reasons. So that causes us to look out here. The other alternative is to take the trail here, cross over at the bottom of Front Street. And there's a sidewalk on the north side of Sycamore that goes the whole way over to Cameron Street. And the alternate would be to take that sidewalk, then stop right here. And you probably can't see it distinctly, but this is the overhead railroad bridge. And so cross over here and then come through, there's two private properties here. And then in here is a stub of city property that extends out from the trail this way. The impediment with this is the vertical curve of the bridge creates a site distance problem for the crosswalk down here. Coming from the east, the piers for the railroad bridge cause site distance issues for a crosswalk here. It's not practical to build a bridge, a new bridge on the other side. That's prohibitively expensive, let alone trying to get permits to go over top of the wires and the railroad tracks. And then, so that leaves us with the cycling traffic on Sycamore Street, pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk. Both of them at this point are substandard for those uses, even though you're correct. PennDOT did give a cycle designation to Sycamore Street. So those are the alternatives that, in our due diligence, we've been trying to examine. Because of the public safety issue with this one and the engineering issues with this alternative, that leaves this alternative as the best potential route. And to illustrate it, it would be to come along the emergency road here and then come across within the side yard setback and reconnect here. We had in the initial sketch plan that was submitted as a part of the zoning request, there was adequate room, the way that was drawn, to accommodate both ways. In addition, the fencing that was shown on that plan was well outside. The perimeters wouldn't be affected by traversing in that direction. The plan that has been filed now has a few other engineering difficulties that are presented, most notably by the reconfiguration of the storm retention basins as well as the rain gardens. But that's an engineering question as opposed to a practical or philosophical question. So that is the preferred route. Those are the alternative routes, the issues that we have in trying to make those work. And so those are the questions that need to be resolved. What we would like to do is to have an opportunity to have a face-to-face and we would like to work on that so that we, and that's a big set of we because it's the developer, it's the owner and other interests involved as well, to see what accommodations we can make out of all of this that are going to preserve the access of the Green Belt. I do want to make one other comment. And this is from my personal experience. I spent 40 years as executive director of the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. So I represented all the county government and the state. And that meant I represented all of the programs and services the county government provides. And so in that context, I worked with the state adjutant general on all of the veterans' programs. We did the work on the Functional Zero Program on veterans homelessness. I even worked with former Justice James McCaffery on his returning veterans peer program. And so we, I understand the issues that need to be addressed with veterans. We also lobbied on behalf of county mental health and behavioral health services. And so I understand the issues that are involved with mental health, with mental health provision and the full spectrum of services you need to provide, as well as the ones that are necessary for behavioral health services. And taking all that together, in this context, what we know is that proximity, the danger presented by proximity, I would evaluate as being over. the danger presented by proximity, I would evaluate as being overstated, and in fact, the opposite is true. When you have trails, when you have recreational facilities in close access, it helps gain both personal access to other amenities in the community, but it also helps with reintegration efforts and can be beneficial in those respects. We also, I, I have to let you know, and I think, this is my final comment, although if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them. We do have fundraising capacity. We've already started to do that. We are working on, we have already been approved for several foundation grants. We have others pending. We have potential for some PennDOT funding and from some, for some DCNR funding. And we started that as soon as we knew this was going to happen, because we knew we were going to have to relocate, and we wanted to be as positioned as we could in order to move forward. As a part of that, we think there are marvelous legacy opportunities here and marvelous partnership opportunities. We, we would be happy to talk about additional buffering, additional lighting, additional security. We also think it would be appropriate, given the uses and, and in addition, the fact of it being part of the National 9/11 Trail, to do monuments, to do other explanatory pieces to help the users of the trail understand, understand and respect and be appreciative of where they are. So I'll conclude my remarks there, and forgive me for the length, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. No questions. Thank you.
Okay, the, so I mentioned there were three remaining private properties. One is a Phoenix Track that extends from here up to the 83 Bridge. It's separate ownership, as I understand it, from this. And then, the property right through into here, the city line runs about here, the property in through here is Kimbob, so it's also private ownership.
I'm gonna, to, while Jeff to respond to anything he heard so far.
I just hope we can delay the next meeting so I can get my, all these meeting minutes done. No, you know, I think, you know, we've, there's been a lot of testimony tonight on various aspects of this project, and I'm not sure what the planning commission is going to choose to do, but, you know, I think the planning bureau's position is unchanged. You know, we would urge you to, if you do take action tonight, to include condition number four as a, you know, requirement of this project going forward. These projects do not exist in a vacuum. You know, we've heard them talking about bringing in the homeless veterans community from the region, and I think to Ann's point about talking about how this integrates with the surrounding environment in which it's located, and frankly, the fact of the matter is, it's not. It's, you know, kind of turning its back on it in the current configuration. And, you know, I think when we look at, to Mr. Hill's last point about the integration of individuals back into society, you know, are, most of them are not going to have cars, if any of them will have cars. So how are they going to get around? They'll be walking and biking, and how are they going to do that? Do the applicants truly feel that having them walk up a five-foot-wide sidewalk till they hit the property line and then walk in a street is giving them the dignity that they, you know, I think that they want to see? And when we talk about how to better incorporate this project into the community, the big thing that stands out, more so than anything else, more so than the population, is, is this piece of infrastructure that can truly connect the property to the properties around it, to the city around it, to the county around it. And really, I think, you know, sew this property into the city as opposed to kind of cutting it out, in a, in a sense. And so I, you know, really believe that, I think, I think maybe further communication sounds like it may be necessary. I don't know if the commission wants to hold that up, but again, if the commissioners feel that they're ready to take action, I would encourage them to keep condition number four in their resolution.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
No, I don't want to. I'm gonna ask the city solicitor for any advice he can give us.
Certainly. Obviously, there's been a lot of passionate input from all sides tonight, and I get to come back to the very dull fact of where the law stands with these things. First of all, if I read correctly, the application submission was August 2nd. The deadline for the other end of this, under the Municipal Planning Code for City Council Act, is December 30th, which lines up the exact same time they have to have a budget approved by the end of the year. So there's time for some reflection and decision-making. Traditionally, this board, as I've understood it for 10 years, when the public input is necessary, sends the applicant back to get some public input, which the neighborhood representative now here has asked for, and which the Neighborhood Association, who technically isn't present, has said they're willing to do, which is a traditional part of a Harrisburg development plan. And you are within your rights and in your precedent to send them back for that discussion. Two, there's some, there, this is unusual for this board, from my experience, in that this is a true preliminary plan, as opposed to a preliminary final plan for the land development. The law for preliminary plans is that within one full year from its final approval, they are back to this board. You know, they don't come back to city council, they come back to this board. After city council finally approves it, they have one year to be back with a final plan. So the discussion doesn't end with this version of the plan. I've always thought Harrisburg, on one hand, tried to accelerate the process for people, but what that did is ended up, it made it very hard to deal with realities for a developer, because their final plan might, for whatever reality, be different, because of, because of economics, because of things they encountered on the property. So, so this gets to developing a sort of more, I think, design of the Municipal Planning Code. You get to come back and see this for where it ends up in terms of a final plan. So there's time to sort of reflect on the other side of this. Three, there is some ambiguities in the documents, and frankly, it just may be because of the limits of what I have, not what Jeffrey received. But the equitable owner is listed as the Tunnels to Towers, and the legal title owner is the Green Chair Trust. But the ambiguity is that the Green Chair Trust owns the 15 acres, but it's, and it doesn't distinguish, at least in the documents I have, whether Tunnels for Towers has an equitable title to the eight-point acres or to the entire plan, which makes it whose plan in part is this? Is it, is it the owner's? Is it the applicant's? Is it a combination? Because I know the other folks came in with a sketch plan in front of you who are trying to take the other piece of this. And I don't know whether they are listed now as equitable title holders, to the remainder of this. Those are all things that can be sort of just ironed out, but I'm saying, but, but from a perspective of, when I go to council to say, "What are you going to vote on?", they're going to need to know things like that. Who are they approving what for? How much are they approving? Are they approving eight acres? Are they approving 15 acres? You know, what is it they're approving? And those, I'm sure Jeff is much more attuned with at the moment than I am, but, but I'm just noting what on the documents in the face of them are issues that do come up. And, and lastly, there's ambiguities on the waiver requests, and there's four listed in the, in the report, and I think, I think if I understand the planning agency's report, while they're requested, they don't seem to be consistent with what's in the, in, in some of the documents, where they're requesting a waiver of the 24-foot subdivisions, these access roads shall be no less than 24-foot. They asked for a waiver, but the plan seems to show 24-foot or more. So, so those are details to be ironed out. I'm saying there are ambiguities that sort of should be discussed and sorted out, and maybe that, maybe this process will do it, maybe it's the final plan that'll do it. But, but I can understand a development like this, which I think everyone supports this idea that this is a very important service that's being provided. These are the details that government's here to sort of figure out in the front end, and that's what everyone's trying to do there. I will note for the applicant, it's a volunteer board. They come in and put their time in as citizens, and they do this on a regular basis, bring their expertise to this, and, and do it on a, on a, on a, on a very fair and even basis. And so, you know, I think they should be commended for how they come in here and take care of this month in and month out, but people bring their passions to these things. I would say the board is free to, to, to ask for the neighborhood advice, if that's what they wish. They can also not do that and just make a vote tonight. That's within your discretion as well. The, you know, but I think, you know, you have that, those options, that's within your purview, both of those things. And you're making, at the end of the day, a recommendation to the city council for what they must do. It's, it's, it's an advisory piece of work at the end of the day, and they would value what your input is in that at once.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, I heard all the arguments. Of course, I'm totally favorable for the project, but there's our zoning and other regulations we, we have to go by. I would like to suggest to the commissioners to table this, to continue this, to get more input from the neighborhoods, and also Jeffrey and so forth, but I, I'll hear whatever you will.
Joe, I'd be prepared to make a motion for a continuance table, and hopefully, next month, there'll be an opportunity for these groups to get together.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to continue this to the next month meeting and for all persons to get together somehow, some way and talk this out. All those in favor, please by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion taken.
If it's of any assistance, our office will be happy to facilitate such a meeting with the parties of interest.
Jeff, any, any other business?
No.
Okay. Anything for the good old order of commissioners? Could I get a motion for adjournment? Is there a second?
Second.
We stand adjourned.